I now call to order the Redna Session Meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, May twenty first, two thousand thirteen, at six thirty. Roll call?
Mayor Archie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Slaughter?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Chirpenny?
Here.
Commissioner Banton?
Here.
Is Reverend Wayne Farrell here? Then we will have our invocation tonight given by our attorney. Will everyone stand? Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance following.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, bless all those who give themselves in service to their fellow men. Grant unto them true judgment, noble purpose, and great daring as they seek to do your will in their work for the people of Tarpon Springs. We ask you a blessing on the Board of Commissioners and on all in attendance tonight, that our work may find favor in your sight. Amen.
At this time, we'll have the four point oh presentation, and we'll turn it over to Michelle and all of us, the Commissioners, who go up on the stage and shake hands.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Tonight's presentation will air at various times throughout the week on the city's government access channel if you visit our city website for the listing of days for the rebroadcast. The first item on tonight's agenda is the recognition of the mayors of Enterprise Village. Tonight, we are honoring the following students who represented the city of Tarpon Springs as mayor of Enterprise Village during the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year. From Tarpon Springs Fundamental, Mallory Clark. From Tarpon Springs Elementary School, Tiaran Volk. From Sunset Hills Elementary School, and also a four point oh, Gina Attia. We will now proceed with the second item, which is recognition of students who maintained a four point oh grade point average or higher for the entire school year. The fifth grade students from Sunset Hills Elementary School, Gina Attia. Taylor Broderston. Andrew Kelly. Lily Apuschner. Matthew Colnicki. Marietta Levantella. Delaney Longley. Aiden Malek. Gabby Martin. Madeline McQuerry. Katrina Mercado. Trinity Nelson. Daniela Orin. Carson Reynolds. Nicholas Stefan. Cayman Sweet. Jeffrey Young. And Sabina Zeronia. From Tarpon Springs Fundamental School, Kevin Allen. Samuel Allen. Fernando Arroyo Gall. Omni Austin. Emma Berman. James Baudelay. Hannah Carricker. Brooke Dennison. Madison Ducharn. Isabella Engelman. Sidney Gray. Ava Hilton. Patrick Keenan. Shelby Lennox. Kevin Madley. Sidney Mullin. Cooper Nelson. Olivia Orsello Simpson. Quinn Reagan. Gabri- Gabrielle Rosin. Olivia Sacalorita. Alexander Theophalopoulos. And Maxwell Thorpe. From Tarpon Springs Elementary School, Harmony Givaldi. And Cameron Fisher. Tarpon Springs Middle School, Anya Abraham. I'm sorry, I'm mispronouncing these names. Alexandria Ball. Amelia Baxter. Michael Blystek. Carrie Gallagher. Kristen Kelly. Marina Kennedy. Amy Lawson. Natasha Liberto. Selena Marinin. Christian Simon. Madeline Smiley. Russell St. George. Ashley St. Pierre. Noah Weatherwatt. And Christine Wilder. Senior from Tarpon Springs High School, Cassidy Area. Beth Cannon. Rana Eltal. Jessica Farong. Amanda Finley. Jessica Finatero. Maria Giorgiata. Hannah James. Kyla Lynn. Namai. Haley Marshall. Juliet Martin. Mary Navramasas. Savannah Middlebrook. Hannah Morland. Mark Noble. Shreya Patel. Grace Demarcus. David Sharstein. Connor Saleh. Shane Struthers. Megan Williams. Jonathan Worthington. And Anthony Durvis. Ladies and gentlemen, those are your graduating classes from fifth grade, eighth grade, and seniors from Tarpon Springs Schools.
Just to take a little time to thank all of these young people for their hard work and determination and their perseverance of excellence in terms of making a four point oh all year long. So we definitely would like to thank them, but also to thank those parents and guardians that have worked hard in terms of encouraging these young people to pursue excellence and the teachers of these schools that have been represented here tonight. Now, I know all of you would just love to stay around for this meeting because you know how entertaining we are, but what we're gonna do is have a brief recess and let you pick up your child and then we'll continue with this meeting tonight. So, thank you for coming out.
Oh, no, I know. Thank you very much. I will.
Next, we'll go to public comments. Any item that would not be discussed this evening, come forward, state your name, address, give it up for four minutes.
My name is Greg Heelam. I live at seventeen oh two Richard Urban Parkway in Tarpon Springs. I live on the north end of Lake Tarpon. First off, I wanted to hand out a couple photos I took today at Park. I live next door. First one's the Brazilian pepper tree. The second one is Park Fire and Case and Grove. And a photo from when the boat ramp used to be open, there used to be thirty-five to forty cars in the park and on the street on a weekend any day. Mayor and Board of Commissioner, I appreciate your time. I'm trying not to make trouble or be a chronic complainer, but an email I received today from Mark Licoris made it apparent we do not agree on what cleaning up Richard Urban Park means. While I greatly appreciate the trees that have been trimmed over the shelters, the potables sold in the grass mode regularly, these are regular maintenance items that I expect to be done in a park owned by Tarpon Springs. My issue is with the giant Brazilian pepper tree that continues to grow larger and larger. It's in a cypress tree growing, and it impedes my view along with anyone who goes to the park's view. I also have concerns about the washout of the actual property line because there's no seawall or walk wall preventing the erosion of the land on the lake's edge. The fence that was put up there to prevent people from using the boat ramp is halfway submerged into the lake right now. My other issue is with the grass and the catsails that are growing uncontrolled along the water's edge, which also spread to my property, what I have to maintain. Most lakefront owners pay to have companies come out and clean their lakefront properties from the invasive plants where alligators like to hang out. I have a small dog. I have two small boys. I like them a lot. A company called Weedbusters takes care of that if the city can't do that. The weeds that impede the waterway are taken care of by the county, but none of the weeds that are on the lake impede the waterway, so it is to the owner's responsibility to take care of the weeds. At the one time, the city's Parks Department did get out in the water and manually clean up these plants themselves, but that hasn't taken place in over five or six years, so it's just grown uncontrolled since then. That being said, Mr. Licoris' solution to reopening the boat ramp will not rid the lake of any of these plants. It may clear the boat ramp, but boat props never clear the property line. I am highly concerned about the threat made by Mr. Licoris to open the boat ramp again. First of all, the boat ramp is not a ramp. It's a bunch of concrete picnic tables that were thrown down there so that people could get traction when they were taking in or out their boat. The police department does not have the manpower to regularly police the park, according to Mark Licoris. I counted no less than thirty-five cars and trailers there at a time some ten years ago. There is parking there for six vehicles, not any trailers, six cars, that's it. There are no parking signs throughout the park. Maybe the board remembers a young teenage girl. They flighted out of the park when two wave runners collided in two thousand and three. She ended up with a head injury from a jet ski hitting her in the face. She also had a broken jaw. I was there providing medical care until the paramedics arrived. Even though there were all these young kids there, no one knew what to do. They dragged her up on the shore and didn't know what to do at that point. These people were coming from Pillsbury County, Pasco County, Pinellas County. There are, there were also two other wave runner injuries in that six-month window before the park was closed. One person ended up with a broken arm. The other ended up with a broken femur. I've watched these kids get dragged up after they were, couldn't get back on their skis by themselves. The park is in a residential neighborhood. If the park ramp is reopened, the police will be constantly called out to maintain the order of the park and the peace. There are two other parks on this lake that are set up for trailering, dropping your boat off, and, and taking care of that. And speaking of peace, my house was burglarized New Year's Day a year ago. The police came out and told me that every time they drive by the park or they're called out to the park, nothing good is ever going on there. It's not a wonder that I would love for the park to be sold. At the very least, could the Parks Department please kill the invasive Brazilian pepper tree choking off the cypress, cut back the lake weeds in the water along the shoreline so the park has a view and the alligators are not a hazard to the people who go to the park? I don't, I don't think this is too much to ask. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. We'll make sure that those comments are noted and have the appropriate parties addressed. Just one note for the record. Mr. Heelam did not read an email from me that talked anything about a boat ramp. You all saw my email. That was the email I wrote. And Mr. Heelam, it's incorrect that he got an email from me about opening the boat ramp.
Someone who sent me an email today, one of the two people, said it was being reconsidered to reopen the boat ramp. I don't have it on me. I have it at my house.
I just wanted to, I could have baited you, but you did not get an email from Mark Licoris saying that he was opening the boat ramp at the place.
Okay, then it must have been Tom, who said there were people wanting to open the boat ramp and they wanted to look at the process again. Sorry if I clarified that incorrectly. Thank you for your time.
Are there any other public comments?
Chris Roboski, one six zero two, Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, three four six eight nine. At the previous city commission meeting, you had been advised to review the Board of Adjustment hearing from February. I also watched that meeting. And I was surprised to see that neither Attorney Armstrong nor our city attorney had closely read the ordinance one thirty-two regarding waivers. Now, after Mr. Delakos pointed out that it read "may" instead of "shall," both attorneys stated that the ordinance was unconstitutional. I had hoped this would be addressed as soon as possible, and since it wasn't mentioned at the last Board of Commission, I went to the planning and zoning last night to see how they were going to address it. Now, just before Rodney Chapman was going to go into that item, Mr. Yakovun asked if he could be allowed to leave to save the city money, but they was asked to stay. Afterwards, when Mr. Chapman got into that item, he said that this would be removed from the Board of Adjustment's ability. At least, they would request that. And so that in the future, it would be up to staff to determine if an applicant had met the criteria and conditions, or if they hadn't. And then they would be paying some sort of fee if they got the waiver. Now, when asked why they were taking this away from the Board of Adjustment, Chapman said something about how he had been asked by the Board of Adjustment to do so, but I watched the entire meeting more than once. That was not said then. Then he went further on to say some other dubious comments about how this had been mentioned from previous boards or something. It would appear that staff may be trying to take an important step out of the process, completely out, and perhaps speed things up or make their jobs easier. It's important to know that the applicants will still have to meet the conditions. And that is best determined by a board such as this and such as the Board of Adjustments, planning and zoning. To put this power in the hands of one person is incorrect. It's dangerous. The city staff work very closely with applicants, so they may feel pressured not to ask tough questions. That's what you're here for. That's what the Board of Adjustment's here for in planning and zoning. They're not so closely aligned with applicants, and they can ask the tough questions. So those determinations have to be met by a board, not one city official. So watch for this item when it comes up in front of you in the future. You have to be very careful in your efforts to streamline the process for applicants, not to remove the process, right? You have to have checks and balances in there. Any one of your decisions that you make as a board could be made by a city staff person. We wouldn't need you at all. But it's much more important to have a board. Make those decisions. You have a variety of backgrounds and opinions. This is what needs to be done. So please be cautious. Now, and you might also want to review the rest of the charter as a side note. I mean, you want to make absolutely certain that it is quote-unquote constitutional as written, and that you don't find out the hard way in court. So I don't know which attorney put that language in there, "may" instead of "shall," but somebody needs to check that that error hasn't been made elsewhere. So a review is in order, as well as a lot of caution, abundance of caution. Thank you very much.
Are there any other public comments? Now, we'll go to a proclamation, and the first one is item number one, Child Water Safety Awareness Week. The proclamation reads, "City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, whereas Pinellas County has five hundred eighty-seven miles of coastline and over sixty-five thousand private swimming pools, and whereas, according to USA Swimming Foundation, drowning is the second leading cause of childhood accidental death, whereas forty percent of Caucasians, sixty percent of Hispanics, seventy percent of African Americans, children have low or no swimming ability, and whereas, participation in formal swimming lessons could reduce the likelihood of childhood drowning by eighty-eight percent. And whereas, the City of Tarpon Springs wishes to support programs that increase awareness, provide education and training relating to child water safety. Now, therefore, I, David Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim May twenty-fifth through the thirty-first, two thousand thirteen, as Child Water Safety Awareness Week, and this will be mailed to the appropriate person." Item number two is Emergency Medical Services Week. And this proclamation reads, "Whereas, emergency medical services is a valued public service, and whereas, members of Tarpon Springs Fire, Rescue, and other emergency medical service teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas, the members of emergency medical services team engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, whereas, people across the nation benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly-trained individuals, and whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of Tarpon Springs Fire, Rescue, and other emergency medical service providers by designate May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, two thousand thirteen, as Emer- as Emergency Medical Service Week. Now, therefore, I, David Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim that, May twenty-fifth through the twenty-fifth, two thousand thirteen, be recognized and two-thousand-and-thirteen, be recognized in the City of Tarpon Springs as Emergency Medical Service Week, and, uh, that's your deficit. And, pardon?
Deputy Chief Donald Sayer, I'd just like to state that one of the major functions of the firefighters is delivering emergency medical care to the residents and visitors of the City of Tarpon Springs. I know that they pour their hearts and souls into delivering this patient care, which makes us part of one of the most world-class organizations out there. I've been, I'm a proud member to state that I've been the EMS coordinator for the last thirteen years, and it's just fitting and deserving that they're recognized during EMS Week. Thank you.
Thank you, all the good, uh... Next we'll go to, uh, Presentation, Item Number Three, Conceptual Proposal for Forbes Property. I'll add your name.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. I first want to thank all the members, uh, in the audience tonight, um, as it relates to this agenda item. Um, as this board knows, and many members of the public know, um, when it comes to the subject of economic development and smart growth, um, that's the subject that strikes near and dear to my heart as, uh, your elected official. Um, in an effort to give a little background of the property, commonly known as the Forbes Property, which is located in downtown, um, it's in the one-hundredth block of the downtown. Uh, about five years ago, the city acquired this land through a lien foreclosure, um, dating back to the Budget Advisory Committee. I was concerned with city-owned properties in surplus, and mainly because when a city own, city owns a piece of property, there are no economic benefits to the city. There are no benefits, um, from an ad valorem tax revenue base, from a redevelopment potential, franchise fees, penny per Pinellas, job creation, et cetera. Um, so, as a group, the Budget Advisory Committee, uh, recommended to the Board of Commissioners at the time, uh, to begin selling these surplus properties and putting them back on the tax roll, and, uh, there was, there was an exception of three properties. Um, the three properties that were not offered for the sale at this time, or at that time, were this particular property, the old nursing home, and the old fire station located on Lemon Street. Uh, the reason not, for not selling these properties, um, the commission and, and the staff at the time felt like these properties were more valuable for a future use, um, for, for a greater, a greater use and potential for development and growth. And at the time, we were in a very challenging and unstable market. Um, since then, the city has entered into a long-term lease purchase with a partnership, um, wanting to operate and open a craft microbrewery at the old fire station on Lemon Street. Um, we had a propose, we received a proposal on the old nursing home, which subsequently we turned down, um, but since then, we've received multiple new proposals that we'll hear at a later date. Um, as it relates to this property, we, as a city, requested proposals. Our Economic Development Manager put together a very detailed package of the property, what it had to offer, what our downtown and our town as a whole had to offer, um, and the results were, were, were very poor. Um, there were no takers, no proposals, and the only feedback received was the project was too costly, too much risk, and not enough reward. All of this is fact, and it brings us currently to today. Uh, a few months ago, I met a gentleman, no stranger to development or the business as a whole, um, who in recent history has invested significant dollars in our community, um, on multiple projects. Um, he believes in Tarpon Springs, he has the ability to develop a beautiful, historic in nature, and true in character project that we can all be proud of. And in, and in theory, this project will act as a catalyst for the rebirth of our downtown. Um, so, tonight, I welcome Mr. Farhad Nickjay and his partner, Mark McConie, um, and I'd like to welcome them, um, to the, to the dais, and, uh, Mr. McConie is going to give a, a brief presentation on, on what they're proposing for the Forbes Property, um, and then from there, Mr. Lacorius will have some comments.
Sure, Mr. Stand up here. Uh, good evening, I'm Mark McConie with F and M Development, and, uh, what we're doing here is, uh, making a presentation on this property, uh, that is on Main Street in downtown. Uh, what we are going to propose is basically, uh, as close of a reproduction to the old GE Noblet Building that originally existed on the Forbes Property, uh, before it was torn down. So, we have, uh, one floor, the ground floor would be retail space, uh, the top floor would be, uh, residential living units. Uh, we're proposing somewhere between six and eight units, uh, is, is about what we could fit there. This rendering here depicts three floors, uh, which was the original plan that we were working on, and since cut it back for economic reasons, and, uh, we believe that this, uh, in a two-story version, which was very closely mirroring the existing building that was there, uh, was, is what we think we can make work. So, we hope to reintroduce some new, uh, modern residential units to downtown to create the live-work-play, uh, new urban atmosphere, and, uh, we are looking forward to working with you on this project.
Obviously, going back to when we put out the bid for proposals, we were, you know, disappointed that we ended up back at the drawing board and really didn't have anybody take it. And some people gave us some candid comments that, uh, you know, even if we gave them the property, it could not make the numbers work, and it was too much of a risk. Um, obviously, we had to hope, and, uh, you know, one of Karen Lemon's, you know, major directives, as well as everybody on this board who heard that no one was taking it, was to maybe find the right opportunity and the right people to develop that property. Obviously, the alternative to developing that property is a large sand pit, uh, in the middle of the downtown for a long time. And we all know the vision of the town, the vision of a livable, walkable community, the vision of downtown Lemon Street Saford that we're seeing with, you know, business below, um, residential above, to have a true downtown community with people above. Um, I was glad when I was brought in, just conceptually, to talk about this project, that first of all, we have some individuals that were offering up exactly what we've been looking for, in fact, what we've been planning for ten years, going through the whole processes of, of doing Lemon Street, of doing the downtown in alternate nineteen corridor, all the things we talked from our early, the early two thousands, when we talked about the livable, walkable community. So, obviously, that was the first step. Also, what impressed me in these initial discussions was that we weren't having to worry about any architectural matches of downtown, because they were going to try to recreate the building that was there, um, which we weren't sure, and, you know, it was going to be something that we, if we negotiated a deal on the land, that we were gonna, you know, demand. Obviously, it's gotta fit in, it can't be a new, modern building in the middle of the downtown, so... What this prospect is, is, is exciting to go, and later on tonight, what I'm gonna ask you is the CRA, since the property is in the CRA, um, is your approval to go forward and actually stop talking conceptual with these individuals, and actually sit down and see what we can negotiate, um, to make a deal to bring back to you to look at about the possibility of bringing forward something on the Forbes Property. So, and pretty much as a CRA, you often do that since the property was transferred to the CRA, and I'm hoping later on, for you to give me the ability to do this again, so we stop talking conceptually, and we can put on paper and try to get a deal, so we can, uh, hopefully start this catalyst for what we hope will be many more improvements of downtown.
Thank you for your consideration.
That, that's all I had, Mayor. I mean, if, if there was any comments, uh, from the commission, I know we're gonna readdress this later in the night, or if there were any, if you wanted to open up for public comments?
I, if, one is that the only thing that we can do with that property, I'm definitely , uh, willing to, um, listen and pursue, so, from that, I guess, you know, as I say, the devil is in the details in terms of what we can work out, and then bring back, uh, to look at, so, um, of course, I'm concerned that, you know, if we move ahead, but we'll discuss it, or vote on it as far as, and, uh, officially for a CRA or something, so... I don't know if anyone else has any comments, but we'll go to public comments.
I, I had a couple of questions. It wasn't clear to me if I should ask them now, or when we're actually gonna vote on this item during the CRA meeting?
Either way, you...
All right. Um, it was mentioned that upstairs, it would be residential, somewhere in the range of six to eight units. I was wondering if it was determined yet if these would be one-bedroom or two-bedroom units, or what the mix would be?
We're trying to determine that right now. We've had, uh, a couple of different architects that have worked on it, uh, originally, we, we were under the impression that it was a sixty-foot wide lot, and we did conceptual drawings based on that, and now we, we understand it's a fifty-foot wide lot, so that is considerably different. Uh, so, we obviously would like to get as many two-bedrooms as we could, uh, but, uh, we, I think we probably need at least six units, so, and, and we were hoping for eight, so it will just depend on how the, uh, layouts come out as to the number and the number of bedrooms. But we certainly need a good mix of two-bedrooms, I believe.
And on the bottom floor, the amount of space could be divided, it could be one, one tenant, or it could be multiple tenants?
Yes, the way it's laid out, it could be one tenant, it could be four tenants, uh, at this point, uh, we're not, we're not, I don't believe we're looking at putting a center hallway down. If, if that were the case, then it could be multiple smaller units, but I think at this point, it's probably gonna work out best in, in between one to four. We'll also have frontage on Court Street, so you'll have frontage from both sides.
Mr. Lacorius, what was the appraised value of the property? Do you remember?
I believe it was eighty-five thousand, off the top of my head.
And then, another question that I would have, um, Mr. Yakobone, as we look to potentially move towards some kind of a negotiation, uh, is, would it be proper to include a requirement to build within a certain period of time?
Um, yes.
In other words, to not have it sitting for ten years vacant, I mean, if...
Well, I think that would be, uh, something that would, we would probably want to include in whatever contract is negotiated, but, uh, just, just like with the, uh, microbrewery, there was deadlines, and, and I don't know whether there are issues of incentives, and we have to work around the buy-sell-or-rease ordinance, but that can all be shaken out in the negotiation.
So, we can include that?
We would certainly expect there to be some sort of timer. It's not an open-ended deal where we, you know, we don't move forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me? Thank you.
Uh, any, uh, public comments in the title?
Mike Kusko, six-two-three East Harpen Avenue. Um, I want to commend, uh, Mr. Terrapani for bringing something like this forward in this smart county, I don't know your partner. Um, I, I think that property's been sitting vacant too long, um, there needs to be a revitalization of the downtown. I would just hope that it's not more antique stores, no offense. Um, we need other types of businesses in the downtown to attract people on a daily basis, and so, uh, more, uh, business space available in the downtown area would be much appreciated, and I think would, would promote, uh, more business in the downtown area. I know Sue Thomas has an excellent job with the Downtown Merchants Association, trying to bring people to the downtown area, but we need more. So, thank you, and thank you for looking at this.
Harry Andropolis, one-thirty-two and one-thirty-four, East Harpen Avenue, I'm the adjoining property owner, uh, to that lot. I would like to commend the commission for bringing this up. I'd like to encourage you to do this. Filling in the streetscape is a wonderful idea for downtown. Open gaps in the streetscape are not a good thing, so, I would like to encourage you with all emphasis to please to go ahead and do this. Let's get this done and get on with our downtown.
Sue Thomas, President, Tarpon Springs Chamber of Commerce, one-eleven East Harpen Avenue. I think this is wonderful. As much as I like the nice fence that the Art Association put up, it's time for a building, and I agree, I'd love to see some gift shops, restaurants, um, more art galleries, but I appreciate you bringing that up. We get a lot of comments at the Chamber of Commerce about that property, and why hasn't it been developed and everything. This will be wonderful. The other side that will be invaluable is the publicity that we will get from it, because I think it will just create, uh, good publicity for downtown, let people know that it is all getting put back together, um, and I, I'm looking forward to it, and we'll do whatever we can to help. Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Well, Seeley Facless, uh, one-thirty-nine East Harpen Avenue, um, a family that's owned the property and the business across the street, um, for over a hundred years. Um, we own some other properties in the CRA district as well, and, um, as Mr. McConie says, we love to live, work, and play in Tarpon Springs. I think this is excellent. I applaud, um, Commissioner Terrapani and the commission and whoever else, um, Economic Development Coordinator, whoever else has worked to bring this to, um, to the table, and I encourage you to do everything in your power to get this project done, to help these people, because this is what we need to do. We need to be a city that encourages businesses, encourages investors, so this product, this project will be the catalyst, um, to continue things, and hopefully, we'll see some other businesses there that have been there for, will be there for another hundred years. So, we applaud this, let's do everything in our power to get it moving.
Marty Peters, seventeen-oh-two, Herald &amp; Jokes, Court, Tarpon Springs. I'm also, uh, Chair of the Budget Advisory Committee, and I'm gonna be speaking as an individual, because the Budget Advisory Committee has not looked at this particular item. Uh, we are, have, over the years, discussed things, as Commissioner Terrapani mentioned, and, uh, would love to see the economic development take place, particularly along Tarpen Avenue. Um, the one caveat I would suggest is, uh, when you get into your negotiations, that we provide some incentives, welcoming people to, uh, participate in Tarpon Springs, and, and, uh, really help fix a problem that we have, but that those incentives be somewhat temporary, and not be some, uh, something that turns into a massive corporate welfare thing, where it's just giving away, uh, tax dollars from Tarpon Springs. So, I would hope, when we do the negotiations, we also, uh, keep that in mind, that... Uh, let, let me give you one example. Savannah Cove, I think, we, uh, we had a situation where we, uh, worked with them to build that, um, apartment complex at Savannah Cove, and, uh, I believe that they rent the property from us, so ultimately, we get that property back. So, that's something that's not totally giving away something from Tarpon Springs, but it is actually something that in the, uh, short term, was very beneficial to us, and in the long term, ultimately, we get that property back. I'm not sure that's the best solution for it, because that's what you do in negotiations, but take a look at it closely and think about the long-term effect for Tarpon Springs, too, and our tax dollars. And, uh, again, welcome to, uh, Tarpon Springs, and thanks for, uh, for doing that. We're, particularly at the Budget Advisory Committee, we're all, uh, very supportive of it, yeah. Like I said, I'm speaking as an individual, because we haven't voted on it, but, uh, we're glad to see you doing it. Thanks.
Any other public comments, and... Look forward to, uh, seeing what you bring back. Uh, with that, we'll go to our next presentation, which is Item Number Four, Healthcare Wellness Center Clinic. Um, Mr. and come up and introduce our guest.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, Jane Nothing, HR Director. I think you'll probably remember about a couple of months ago, the city manager and I, uh, made a presentation about some initial preliminary, uh, concepts from the Florida League Cities regarding a wellness center for our, for the city's, um, health insurance participants. Um, tonight, we have a representative from the league to present further details of the project, Chester Clay Austin. Mr. Austin has more than fifteen years' experience in the healthcare industry in various capacities, and I have actually worked with him for over seven years on the city's... on the city's insurance, uh, health insurance plan. Um, he is the benefits account executive, and now is the Director of Group Health for the Florida League of Cities. I do want to mention that, yeah, I want to take the opportunity that, to mention that it has been through Mr. Austin's, uh, initiative that this project has been explored, developed, and comes before you again tonight. Um, so without further ado, I'd like to introduce Mr. Clay Austin, Director of Group Health for the Florida League of Cities.
Thank you, Jane. Appreciate it. Um, I wasn't sure if y'all had the handouts, uh, available here. I've got extras if you need them, and, uh, I can leave these here, too, for, uh, for, for your record, so. Um, what I'd like to do is take a little bit of time and revisit, uh, so I don't take a lot of y'all's time this evening, but actually get our, our points across on, on where we're at with the project and the pilot program. I'm extremely excited to be here in front of y'all. There's been, uh, a lot of people's time and, and effort that has gone into, uh, producing this pilot program and actually getting it together. I want to thank everybody that's been involved in that, uh, in this room. It's greatly appreciated, as well through the league, uh, of, of getting this together, so. Um, one of the biggest pieces of, of why this was a pilot program for the league, and, and why we came together with, uh, Tarpon Springs and, and, and Oldsmar as well, was, you hear everything that goes on with healthcare reform now, you can guarantee you that the cost of healthcare is not going to decrease in the, in the short term here. Long term, maybe. Um, very long term. Uh, so, what our, our one goal at the league is, is to keep the cost down and, and be mindful of budgets for our, for our member cities. Uh, one of the biggest ways to do that is to help with, with, with bucking the trend of what healthcare keeps doing from year to year. So, that's actually where this pilot program came from, was to get some control over, over what goes on with your benefits from year to year. And I can tell you, speaking from, from, uh, from experience, um, with the, with the city of Tarpon Springs and with Oldsmar since I've done with the league, that it, it is an initiative that, that is, that I'm excited about, that's really going to help the, uh, help the membership and help the employees as well as the city. So, if you look at the first page of the presentation, um, just want to go over a couple of the advantages of the wellness center, and then I'll go into, into, uh, into why it, why it, uh, why it made sense for the league to look at this as a pilot program. Um, there are several issues, there are several, um, positive points of this, definitely, that I want to point out on the employee and dependent side of it. Uh, the clinic would be open to all employees and dependents. Um, we, we talk about it removing barriers to, to, um, to care. Uh, one of the barriers, biggest barriers, is the money side of it, and getting your employees and their dependents into actually see a doctor when they need to. Um, co-pays are there. Everybody knows what they are. You can, you hear them called a lot. Uh, one of the, one of the advantages of this is that it doesn't have co-pays as part of it, because what we're trying to do, uh, in the long run, is decrease what the claims liability is, and your claims directly relate to what your rates are from year to year. I, I know that, uh, if, if anybody deals with, with finance in here, they see that, and I'm, I'm Mark and Jane, but they'll be aware of that as well. So, that's what we're trying to, uh, that's what we're trying to, uh, to bend there. Um, the other piece is, it's, it's not, it's not an insurance claim. It's, it's a clinic that's, that is, for, for lack of a better word, is the clinic of the cities themselves. Um, areas of ownership that you'll see between the, uh, between the, um, employees and dependents of the city and the clinic that they're using. Uh, we, we've seen case studies of it. Uh, we've been in Tampa, we've been in Clearwater, we, we look at Clearwater and Dunedin's project. I've been down in South Florida as well with, um, Palm Beach Terrace Office, and, uh, who runs a very large one, and I've seen that work, and seen the, uh, seen the real-time, uh, evidence of that. And, uh, it, it is a true employee benefit. Um, for, for to tell your employees that they can actually go and get healthcare without charge for, uh, especially a family with children, what a great benefit to have, so. And to, and to bring it back over and actually talk about a little bit of the member city side of it, um, it does answer the needs of what we were asked for from our, from our municipality. Um, it happened that we had a unique situation here, that we had two municipalities that were right by each other, uh, between Oldsmar and Tarpon Springs. Um, and that cost saving through there actually being a, uh, you couldn't go out as a small group the size of Tarpon, Tarpon Springs or Oldsmar and go to do this on your own. It's just feasibility would not allow you to do it. So, our idea as the league was to come in and say, okay, well, maybe there's a way to combine, and you are what they call fully insured. Usually when these are done, it's self-insured. Um, to be able to come in to a fully insured, um, opportunity like we're in right now, and to have two cities that can come together to do that, was actually an, uh, an amazing coincidence, and it, and it, and it happened to work out well when we were, uh, even, even showing our board the, um, the positive sides of running this. Um, so just keep that in mind as, 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 as I speak to this. And it is a place to, to, we keep seeing wellness centers. It is a place to promote wellness. So, so that'll, when we talk about promoting wellness, we're just talking about having access for, uh, for, uh, for a physician, and the, and the easy access of that. And you'll also see on the, on the, on the presentation, you see me refer to it as HMO concept. It is a little bit of an HMO concept. It doesn't cost anything to go to that doctor. It's a decreased, it's a decreased expense to the employee and the dependent, for giving quality healthcare when, when other times, maybe they weren't, maybe they weren't getting in to see their doctor. Maybe it was a cost factor. Uh, uh, you know, you, you don't know what really goes on in people's lives from year to year, so that's what, that's what this is built around, so. The, the next page, I, I want to talk a little bit about the selection process and, and why we're here. I, I spoke for why we chose Tarpon Springs and Oldsmar itself. We did choose a vendor for this, uh, for this pilot project that is through CARE ATC. Actually brought a, a, their representative that I've worked with, uh, Don Wenders, if you have any questions about the administration side of it. I brought him along to be able to answer that. Um, we did do extensive research on your, your, uh, your local clinic here. It's fortunate that right off the road, that, um, that Dunedin Clearwater Share Clinic as well, now they are self-insured, so it's a little different, um, about where their costs are coming from. They're having to pay that piece out of pocket from the front, from the front end, which is a heck of a budget item when you, when you come in front of a, a council available to, uh, to say that to them. Um, CARE ATC handles that clinic as well as the one in Tampa. Um, we vetted the, the process out a lot on who was going to handle it. I was extremely happy with our results from there, so, so that piece really, um, really fell into place. It also helps that they're a zero-cost provider to United Healthcare. What zero-cost means is that United doesn't charge us anything for the data shares between getting the people into these management programs if they're looking for that, and, uh, any smoking cessation or any kind of wellness help that they would need in there as well. Um, one of the most important things is, is staffed by a medical doctor. There are other models out there that do not have that. Um, my, my, my board is pretty adamant about, about having that in there, uh, as well as my boss. So, I, 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 I found an extreme comfort level with that as well. Um, we, we, we did also choose this area. It does have high primary care utilization, um, across our book. This area just is that. Um, the more people that get into this clinic, the more savings you'll see on that side of it. And I'll go into a little bit of that, uh, if you look at the next page. I want to talk a little bit about, about the structure itself. Um, preliminary, we're looking at running the, the clinic for twelve hours per week to keep it open two days a week. If at any time, what we see that there is a need for additional hours, that people aren't able to get appointments, and, and we have to push for that, we're going to expand hours on it and meet with the cities and talk to them about what that, what that would be. Um, the startup cost to build out and the ongoing administration, the league's actually putting that bill to start, um, that is, uh, that's, like I said, that's a large budget item in there. Um, the monthly cost of the leased property, um, we're still dealing with the contracting side of it, but that's the part that there does have to be a shared responsibility here, because there does have to be some buy-in that, 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 that actually goes into the clinic. And then the clinic usage itself, the clinic usage will go straight into savings or potential savings from year to year, and the next year's renewal of the rate. So, what we're trying to do is, the more people that you get in to use this clinic outside of the, outside of the typical healthcare system, the more people you get in here, you're actually reducing your claims cost. So, that's when the city itself would see the potential savings on that back end of it. And I, I, I've always been told to, uh, to, uh, especially from our legal counsel internally, to give what the downside would be. The downside is absolutely driven by if it's not utilized. If there's not utilization there, and there's not buy-in from, from administration, and there's not buy-in from the employees, you've missed the boat and it fails. So, so that's one of the biggest pieces of, of what my job would be moving forward, and what CARE ATC's job would be moving forward, is working with our cities and making sure that it's promoted correctly, and it's promoted as a true benefit to the city itself. Um, if you switch to the next page, I just want to give a little bit of, what a small little piece of the pie of the claims that we're trying to catch in there, and, and, and what we're trying to show for that saving side of it. When you're just looking at eleven percent of the total claims, and mind you, you're talking about prescription drugs that are filled within the clinic itself, um, wellness visits that are, that are, that are in there for them, for, uh, at no cost. If you can just get that piece there, and you catch that little eleven percent piece, that's actually close to what our break-even number is. Uh, once that break-even happens, you've covered your build-out, you've covered everything else as, as the league would, and, uh, then you start seeing your real savings down the road on that side of it. So, the whole, this whole thing is built around trying to decrease what the medical trend is over a period of time. And, like I said, I, I, I couldn't have found a better pilot area to do this, and, um, I, I'm glad so far that the, uh, that the, uh, the pilot program has been received, uh, internally, and, uh, be able to present this to you guys today. Um, we're going to take any questions that you might have.
I, I was looking at the turnings, uh, he wanted to say something, but...
I thought Mark, you had something to say? Well, Tom Trask and I have been, uh, dealing with Clay and, and his boss, Chip Morrison, and, and I, and I, maybe I wasn't the only one, but I wanted Clay to come down here, um, to address some issues, because we're getting close to, uh, I guess finalizing a contract to present to you. Um, and I thought it would be a good opportunity for you to talk to Clay and understand how it could work and, and the benefit to the city. Um, in, in some of the initial discussions, uh, I, I had, I raised the, I raised the question is, you know, is this going to decrease our premiums? And, and Clay and Chip were very clear in saying that this is a, a pilot, pilot program. They don't know. Um, if it works, it should reduce our premium. And, and Clay, step in if I butcher this, but as I understand it, our, our healthcare costs are, are determined annually by our claims experience. Uh, and, uh, the claims experience costs go up the more our people use, uh, outside healthcare providers, uh, which means next year theoretically, uh, we're going to have a, uh, higher annual premium. And I, this is very broad in context, is what I'm saying. The cost of this clinic, uh, you know, the league is paying that, but it will be, as I understand it, in the second year, it will be, uh, be calculated as part of our claims experience. So, I'm just going to use some, now, let's suppose we have a million-dollar annual claims experience, and it costs them two hundred thousand dollars extra to run this clinic. Then, in year two, um, if we still have a million-dollar claims experience, then, then they're going to base the premium on one point two million dollars of claims experience. The idea is, if, um, if city employees start to use this, then they're going to be, that's going to reduce the claims experience. And these numbers may be totally off, but, you know, we're buying for the two hundred thousand dollars of costs, in my, my hypothetical, if it's two hundred dollars in annual cost, it's buying us four, it's buying us a decrease of four hundred thousand dollars in claims experience, so that in the second year, our claims experience would actually be eight hundred thousand, which means our, our premium would be reduced. Is, is, is that...
On the line.
And, and, uh, um, and so one of the things I want, and I'm, I'm always saying so, I want to make sure you guys asked the right questions, are satisfied. You know, there, there, you know, we discussed guarantees and how, if there's any way to build into this contract, some way to, you know, ma- make any representations or promises, how the rates would go down, and, uh, if they would go down, and, you know, fundamentally it came down to the, that, uh, there's no way to offer any guarantees that this is going to work. It's a matter of trust. Um, you know, the understanding is, if at the end of two years, we realize this isn't going to work, you know, then the whole thing may fail. Um, I've worked with the league. I've been at, I have to do fair disclosure. I've been a defense attorney for the league for twenty-five years, um, never done any health insurance for them, but I can tell you, as an insurance defense attorney, I've never met an organization, um, that, uh, functions as an insurer, that goes further and does more than any other insurance company, uh, in the world to, to protect the interests of insured, of its insurers. Um, and, and so I guess fundamentally, what, what, uh, this commission needs to do, at, at least in part, is satisfy itself that, um, you know, the league is committed to using this as an opportunity to try to reduce, uh, your premiums, and that's the objective. Uh, understanding there are going to be no, no guarantees from anything, but, you know, that's the mission of the league, as I see it, to assist cities in every way, and they've done that in all facets I've been exposed to. So, I just, I wanted to give, and I want to raise these issues so that you can ask any questions of Clay, because I thought, you know, Mark and I could talk to you how great the league is, but sometimes you need to talk to the horse and see what the horse's mouth is going to say, and no offense, but...
The only thing that I want to add, uh, is kind of something I mentioned I gave last. Um, there are risks on both sides of this, but the league is taking the major risk, especially when you're talking about money. There's going to be money involved on our, on our end, and the possibility of, you know, the possibility of things not working down the road, and maybe will be some money, but the one thing that we can see from this, no matter what in two years, is we're going to be able to help some of our employees with a benefit. Obviously, with the raises and the way the economy's going, we haven't been able to help our employees with a lot of benefits as far as there, but this is a definite money in the pocket saving things for them. It is also something I'm passionate about, because I remember back in my police days when we mandated physicals, and we had some great opposition from the union about forcing people to doctors and taking physicals and that sort of thing, but not that we're going to force them in this case, but we're going to give them the opportunity. From those physicals, we had several officers with potential life-threatening situations that they knew absolutely nothing about, and by offering this, by offering these physicals, um, to employees who may not pay, or, or many of our employees, so I guarantee you don't even have a doctor, if they go and you find one cancer caught early, you find one of the sit- situations of doing it, you know, the money you'll save, not only in the cost of that medical that they have to face down the road if it gets caught much later, but the fact that you save the employee a whole bunch of grief to them and their family in the future by catching early, you know, that by far outweighs any benefits or risk of us paying a portion of the lease, or whatever, whatever we're going to pay down the road. Um, you know, we can save an employee's life with this. So, it, it's very hard to put a cost in the risk, although we do have a risk. You know, it's one of those situations where we could save our employee's life or save a great deal of grief from dealing with a medical situation for it. When the clinic first came up with Clearwater, I was a little skeptical, but Clearwater's was a booming success. And then when Dunedin jumped right in and joined with them, and Dunedin is absolutely ecstatic with the clinic, and we as the north managers were meeting about it, and, you know, we were talking about a time one day maybe we could be involved. It's not so easy with the way the Clearwater-Dunedin one is set up, but I think a lot of those talks, and us being involved with the wait-and-see with Clearwater, and then with Dunedin, I think that makes us an ideal pilot project. Us, our city managers from the two cities, Oldsmar and Tarpen, had already been looking at that concept, watching their, their neighboring cities, and seeing what a booming success it is, and how employees who were originally skeptical the first just absolutely loved those clinics and love the benefits of those clinics now. So, we sat and watched the example to see what happened with that clinic. So, there is the success right here down the road. So, um, you know, I just see there's something, as for our employees, there's something that we need to do, and again, the league knew when they came to talks, that there's no way we could do it like Clearwater and Dunedin, they expend that much money to start a clinic, bringing, I mean, there's no way you could budget in our budget, uh, the money to do it. And the only way we could do it is the league were to step up and do this pilot thing, and, you know, I really didn't know if they were going to do it, but they did it. They got it through their board, and they're here to ask us to go forward, so I see it all as a plus-plus to move forward with this. And again, we're bringing this to you a little early. The contract's not done yet, but probably when the contract comes, probably June fourth, we're not going to have a full board, so I wanted to make sure they were here with a full board. make sure they were here with a full board, and I wanna thank them for the very last minute to be asked to come here, they're only told Thursday, they're like, can you come here Tuesday? Because the fourth, we're not gonna have a full board because of graduation, and I wanted everybody to hear this and get some questions out. Plus, sometimes when the contract is, we're gonna try to get the contract to you as soon as it's done before the meeting, so you have maybe a little extra time to look at that, so you're ready for any questions about that contract before. And I know we're gonna be missing the mayor for graduation, but the mayor with his involvement, the mayor with the league, he's kinda familiar with his time stuff and familiar where the league's going, so, um, but I wanted the chance of them to be here when the full board was here, um, to hear this again and hear from the league their commitment.
And the timing issue is important, because, but I guess, uh, our claims experience starts from June to, it starts at June, so it'd be nice to start this, we won't be able to, but if we could start at June first, then you can have a whole year's of claims experience. So, I, I think we're gonna try to bring this back to you at least sometime in June, so we'll have a contract on it, hopefully.
It, it looks now with the, with the build out because of the, because of the contract and getting that through, it looks now it would be in August start. By the time the build out's done, uh, just so I don't see they don't lose it out until August starts.
Well, I, I just say is that, you know, while we've talked as far as, um, the mayors of, based in North County in terms of what the city manager talked about in terms of trying to do what Dunedin and Clearwater has done, and Oldsmar is very excited about being involved, and I do have the opportunity to be on that, uh, that trust board, as my predecessor, uh, former mayor Valeris had, and we've had a longstanding relationship with the, with the league as far as insurance is concerned, and it's been, uh, a profitable one. I know all of us look forward to when we get those refund checks back, um, for my involvement, and this is a, uh, to me, a, a, a unique, uh, opportunity, uh, that we have, and we know that one of the, the biggest barriers to people even using healthcare is, uh, is copay. I mean, and hopefully what, what happens here, and I think that, um, Mr. Austin was right in terms of, you know, it, it hinges upon whether the members of the, uh, employees take advantage of it, but I think that some of the incentives that, um, Dunedin, Clearwater has now, as well as what Tampa's using, in terms of allowing employees to, uh, be able to leave and, and go and schedule their appointments, get in, not have to take all day off and, and hope that they, they might get well, then try to schedule a, a doctor's appointment and the rest. Hopefully all those things will be incentives that, um, the employees look at this as a unique opportunity. I just wanna thank, uh, our attorney and the city manager for bringing Mr. Austin down. Um, I, I don't have a lot of questions, 'cause I have, uh, the unique opportunity to ask questions, um, of, uh, of, uh, Mr. Austin and, and others that, that's directly involved in this, so, right now it's open up, I don't know if anybody else have any questions or whether you wanna even talk about some of the incentives that, uh, possibly can be put into play in terms of, uh, uh, employees wanting to be a part of this, you know?
Yeah, I, that, the, as far as the, like I, I mentioned the ownership piece of it, and, and, uh, Mr. LaCorus actually started to speak to it, a, a little bit on what, what the, the ultimate goal of the clinic is, can you hear me, keep saying the wellness piece of it? The ultimate goal is, because your claims are dr- your rates are driven by your claims, if we do catch something early to keep that person out of the hospital and keep them from having something major happen, and, and this is the reality of it, and this is kinda what's near and dear to me with it, is if we can keep them and, 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 and find something early with somebody and be able to treat it and keep them healthier, that's our big win. And, 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 and every city we've been to has recognized that, every city that we have, or, or the sheriff's office or city, every place we've been into that has one of these in place, that's the first thing that they tell us the second we walk in there, that there's an ownership, uh, and it's changed a, it's changed a, I guess just the way that the employees think, just the culture of, of what that city is, or what that, what that municipality is. And it's really nice to hear it, and, and it, it surprised me, 'cause I wouldn't think enough wherever the conversation was gonna go, to be on with the league, most of the time it's revolved around budgeting and, and where the money savings is at.
Thank you. Um, thank you very much for being here this evening. I'd like to say thank you to the mayor and the city manager, the city attorney, everybody, Ms. Niffen, everybody that's been involved, uh, with this project thus far. Uh, I'm excited about it, I think there's a lot of potential for this to be an added benefit for the employees, as well as potentially a cost savings for the city as well. Uh, I had a couple of questions. I, I wanted to first of all clarify the timeline. It sounds like we're gonna be voting on the contract for the agreement on June fourth, is that...
Hopefully.
Hopefully June fourth?
Hopefully, but, but, at a minimum...
Mr. Yakal seems less confident about the June fourth date.
We're still hammering out, uh, the final edit, I don't know where you guys are on that.
He's, he's got it ready for you.
Okay.
Yeah. So maybe June fourth, and prior to June fourth, we're, we're gonna get that in advance to be able to review and make sure we have a good understanding of it. And I heard an August start is already in the works?
Yeah, that's the push dog. We were, we were, our original goal was, was pushing for July first, that just to get build out and, and everything done.
Is, is the location already, like, selected? Like, is that all known already?
We, we've got an idea, if it's still available whenever the contract's done, um, uh, oh, what's the location address?
Republic, Republic Bank Building. I mean, Alderman and...
Alderman and Camper Road, I think. Yeah, just south of Winghouse Tiffany's, the plaza that, just south of there, that old bank building.
And then another question, I know some of this stuff I'll, I'll see when I have the actual contract to look at, but I just wanted to understand, it, it mentions on, I think the last, or the next to last page of the, uh, presentation, all startup build out and ongoing administrative materials costs for Wellness Center, uh, paid by FMIT. That's, that's obviously phenomenal news for the city. Um, when it mentions ongoing administrative materials costs, that would be ongoing for the length of the agreement, and the initial agreement is scheduled to be a three-year and two-month term?
It would be.
Is, and maybe the answer is we don't know yet, but would the plan be after the first term for FMIT to continue to cover the ongoing administrative material ca- and material costs if, if every, if our parties agree to move forward, is that what the plan would likely be?
So that's your, so that's your shared risk as a municipality? Because we are going to, we are gonna roll what it costs us to maintain that clinic and keep, keep running it, so we're buying everything at wholesale versus retail, right? We, we got that piece of it. But we are gonna roll that into the rate. If everything goes as, as we talk about here, and we push enrollment and we push the, uh, we push the utilization of it, that's where you see your savings on it, but that will go into your calculation using standard underwriting practices.
Okay.
So what we're doing is we're covering the upfront cost of, of doing that.
Okay. Um, and then I, I understand the, the concept, and it's underlined at the bottom of the page, promoting employee-dependent utilization is the most important driving factor for savings. Uh, so my next question would be to, for Mr. LaCorus, maybe Ms. Niffen, what, what plan we have in place for educating employees about this concept? Because if, if we got an August start date, we obviously would need to put plans in place right now, uh, to educate the employees about this concept. And on a related note, are we going to have some kind of teamwork with Oldsmar? Because obviously if Harp and Springs utilizes the clinic, but Oldsmar doesn't, then that's not gonna be a recipe for success, so I, I don't know if there's gonna be coordination with Oldsmar to come up with some kind of a plan for educating employees, uh, about utilizing the clinic, but is that something that's already being discussed at the time?
That, that's pretty much where we're gonna be ready to go on our part. First of all, in ours, with immediate leave, we know it's a deal, Seinfeld delivered, immediately having the meetings with the, uh, the employees, and of course, again, you know, between the city managers and assistant city managers of, of, uh, Oldsmar, who's been working on this and others to coordinate, you know, we both talked about how we have to do that, Ms. Niffen and I have talked about some incentives, um, that, uh, that would be advantageous, for instance, the ability of, for instance, the, the first hour on work time not to be charged against your sick time, some other things to encourage and, and get this thing going. Um, both cities have been talking about, you know, there needs to be some incentives to get this started, um, and this is something we got from some other places who've been successful in it, um, which is really, you, you think about, well, geez, you're giving them, you're not using, you know, you're not having the sick time for an hour. This is something where you're gonna get in and out. Otherwise, we lose the employees sometimes for a whole half day, as they go to their doctor, sit an hour and a half to get in for their appointment, get in, back in three or four hours, you lose them for four hours. So, even giving them the first hour and not charging it, you know, you're, you're getting them back for three hours of work time that, you know, is a benefit. So, so those things are pretty much discussed and ready to put in place and, uh, and, uh, to be in the promotion and, uh, examples about setting up those meetings from the moment the contract is approved by you and all, everything signed, uh, to immediately start those meetings in partnership with Oldsmar and their employees and, uh, and, uh, get a kickoff.
Thank you.
And I'd, I'd like to add something to that really quick, too, that you're not on your own during that, the league's there to actually help with the education piece, that's one of our big parts, too, 'cause we do have a vested interest in it. I have a, I have a possibility for loss on this, so we will be extremely involved in, in the education piece, and it behoves us to do that.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um, I just had a couple of questions. Thank you for your presentation. Um, when we, I first heard about this, our last meeting, I, I didn't quite understand the concept, but, um, I spoke to some people in the community, uh, in the medical field, and I think they're, you know, convinced me that this is a great idea, and explained it more, um, more in detail to me, and, so, it's a great, it's a great, it's a great opportunity for our city. Um, yeah, I don't like sitting in the doctor's office, and if you can't even get in half the time, you have to wait, you know, how many weeks when you call for an appointment and you're sick now, you know, so this is a great opportunity for us. Um, question on Clearwater, the Clearwater or Dunedin Clinic, how long has that one been operating?
Since July two thousand ten.
Two thousand ten? Okay, great.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, I wanna take a, I...
So not, not, not very long, actually?
Yeah, well, I'm gonna write down there.
Yeah, they're a, they're a exception to the rule for that quick of a success story, that was a very big success story. But they had several, they had several factors going on, and they happened to have a little better claims year, too, so it, it, it was several things stacking up, but, yeah, they got it off the ground pretty quick.
And then the one in Tampa, how long's that one been open?
February two thousand eleven.
Eleven, okay, well, good, good. And so, seems to be working. Um, so as I understand, you said there is a property allocation picked out up on US nineteen?
We hope, yeah.
Yeah.
It's all negotiable.
Um, those attorneys like to drag their feet, so, um...
No.
Sorry. Uh, my other, my last question is, um, it says monthly cost of leased property shared by Harp and Springs and Oldsmar and paid to Care ATC, so we will pay rent, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, what, what our, what our financial obligation, uh, is going to be, and our city's following almost close to very even seventy, thirty split as far as employee numbers and stuff, so we will be paying seventy percent, Oldsmar will be paying thirty percent of that lease, that would be our expenditure, um, into the...
And so we don't know how much that is yet until the attorney draws up the, uh, contract?
No, and we don't know till we...
Well, we, we, we know, you know, it's about...
Oh, they negotiate with, right.
Yeah, your, your, their share would be around...
Twenty-one to twenty-two hundred dollars, your share, Oldsmar being...
Month.
A month, yeah.
And, and keep in mind, too, that those, everything that goes through that clinic that is Oldsmar is coded as Oldsmar, and everything that goes to that clinic that's Harp and Springs is coded as Harp and Springs, so we're able to keep that piece separate, too.
Okay, okay. That's, uh, you know, thank you for that, 'cause, um, you have to keep track of who comes in from Oldsmar, and, okay. So, so, so just to reiterate, this is for all city employees, is it including police on fire?
Yeah, all city employees and dependents. Covered, covered. If they're on the health plan, they're...
If they're on the health plan. Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Okay, would you stop in?
Thank you. I have similar questions and concerns of some of my colleagues in relation to, um, you know, where the location was, um, uh, sharing costs, et cetera. Uh, my biggest thing would be as we move forward, it seems like a great idea, I mean, anytime you can, can save money with relatively low risk, that's always something that seems to be attractive. Um, as we move forward, though, when, when the contract is ready, I would certainly appreciate to have the contract, you know, prior to the meeting, or at a, and something that I would suggest is maybe have an executive session, uh, prior to the meeting that we're gonna approve it, as we're doing some other instances, so, um, you know, that would, that would be a, a board decision, but certainly be able to see the contract prior to the commission meeting would be helpful.
As, as soon as I get it, I'll, I'll send it. I don't know.
Are there any more questions?
Uh, any, uh, public comments in the time?
Mike, this is student six two three, East Harp Avenue. I wanna give this, uh, uh, city, uh, kudos for looking at the cost of healthcare within the community and the employees and trying to provide something to the employees. I have some concerns, obviously, uh, with regards to this program. You know, uh, it seems that the city is actually paying for the cost of the physicians, the office, and all the startup costs is just factored into the premiums and paid out over time, and that's how it's done. Uh, there is uncertainty, I know, uh, commissioner, I mean, uh, 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 city manager LaCorus said, you know, if, if the employees are sick, they've got a place to go to, but they have only a place to go to twelve hours during the week. Um, that's all of the hours that it's gonna be open. Um, I'm a little bit disappointed in this commission, because they did not even bother to look at the hospital to see if there was a program, if the hospital could do something similar and offer the same program. Whether they can or not, they weren't even asked to come to the table, and that's disappointing, because the hospital is your largest employer in this community, it serves this community. And, and, again, am I, I'm very disappointed. Um, I didn't know what the presentation was gonna be, so I came here with an open mind. You know, currently the hospital employs nine primary care physicians. We could do the same thing with offices in Uport, Ritchie, Harp and Springs, and Palm Harbor, which provide the same benefits, um, probably at, at, at a less expense to the city, but you know what? No one asked. No one asked to sit down with the hospital and the hospital administration to see if there's a program that the hospital can develop for the city. Um, the ci- the hospital has put over fifty million dollars in capital expenditures in that hospital, and, and to have, uh, uh, employees of, of this community to go outside of this community for their healthcare is shameful. You know, the hospital conducted, uh, skin cancer screenings to, to the, uh, uh, the golf course, and all the employees on the golf course. It's doing the same thing to the employees of the Penous County School Board, all the coaches and all the staff at Penous County School Board. So this, this hospital does provide a service to the community. Um, I'm just livid, I'm just livid, so excuse me if I jump around. Um, and I apologize, 'cause I was not intended to be this, uh, um, angry. Um, we have, again, in-house physicians, we have hospitalists that are, that, that are employed physicians, we have surgical teams, our employed surgical teams, that, you know, are the benefit to this community, and if, if given the chance to sit down with the hospital, hospital administration, um, I, I believe that something can work, can be worked, work with the city and then come up with a program. But you know what? No one asked. No one asked. And that's shameful. I believe we can offer the same program at less expense, employees can stay within this community and see their physicians, uh, they're open, the physician practice, they're open a lot more than twelve hours a week, two days a week, I mean, um... I li- I'd like to have Mr. Hoover, Paul Hoover, with the hospital administration, step up. Um, he's not as livid as I am, but, um...
What I would ask Mr. Consumer, is that you have four minutes, if Mr. Hoover comes up, he's gonna be taking your, your minutes, so...
That's fine, he can have my minutes.
If you're two, you know, we just wanna do this the right way.
I understand. I, I can go on, Mr. Mayor, but I'm, I'm kinda angry and I don't, and, uh...
I don't wanna, I don't wanna have a... I have a right call, either, so, you know, I, I could do those things.
Well, I, I have to step from my anger, Mr. Mayor, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and, and, and stop talking about it.
You can be afraid to temperate in my office when you come see me later on, stuff, you can, you're sharing a temper, and I'll be, you don't have to address it.
Paul's address thirteen ninety-five South Penous Avenue, Florida Hospital, North Penous. Uh, the hospital has had a longstanding history of commitment to this community's health and wellness, as has that of Florida Hospital. For over a hundred years, Florida Hospital has served the local communities, uh, that they... they operate within. Uh, we have invested in the community, um, and, you know, we've all seen the dollar figures and I'm proud to live here and I'm proud to be a resident here. I'm proud to go out in the waterways, shop and eat here, as each one of us are. Just a few minutes ago, we heard about the economic redevelopment, we talked about a parcel of property that, uh, you've heard everyone talking about, and we wanna invest in this, uh, piece of property. So we've got a, a piece of property here at the hospital, here in the community, that's open, that's vibrant and something that's quite frankly, I'm proud of. I'm proud to go there, I'm proud to take my family there if and when I'm sick. I know many of you have come through there and had the same opportunity and you've talked about the changes and the transformation that have occurred, and we're proud to be a part of that. We're proud to be a partner in the community and we're proud to continue to invest in enhancing the health and wellness of the people of this community. So, you know, I applaud your desire to, uh, as I, as I heard from the presentation, you know, increase regular, uh, office visits, get better access to care, enhance savings and screening, that's the same thing that we're all after, and quite frankly, that's what the soul nation is trying to figure out. Rather than bring in folks from out of the area, extend additional duplicative resources, I encourage you to work with people in the community who are here, who have an access of, uh, a network of physicians, a network of care and the ability to provide this with, quite frankly, I believe, a lot less risk than what is being considered today. Um, so, all that being said, uh, before we move ahead, let's keep Tarpin Springs strong, let's work with the businesses and the communities that are here, and if there's any way that, uh, we can be of service to the community, please let us know, we're more than happy to, uh, to do so. So thank you for your time and for your consideration. Any questions?
I have a question. Mr. Mayor. Is that okay?
I, I, uh, you're gonna ask him a question, we're not gonna get into, you know, this, he has four minutes.
I'll say it.
You know how it works.
I'll say it.
Okay.
Chris Roboski, one six zero two Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpin Springs, three four six eight nine. I wrestled with whether or not I was gonna come up and speak about this because I was under the assumption that, that a request for a proposal had been put out, because I was thinking there's no way you would allow a presentation of this nature, because then that would bar them from the contract. This has happened before, when we were talking about having, uh, garbage pickup, you said you could not allow them to give a presentation, or they would be barring themselves from actually applying for the contract. So now has that changed? I have missed about four or five meetings in the past year. So is that somehow changed, or did they bar themselves from the process by giving the presentation to you today? I, I'm all in favor, it sounds like a great plan, I mean, I'm all in favor of it, I'm just saying, are you following your own rules or not? And if not, Mr. Kusudus, they very well be in line to give his proposal now, his presentation, rather, before the proposal, and every other medical clinic that ever existed could come in here and do the same thing, that was the argument. That's why you said they couldn't do it for the trash pickup, that everybody would have to be allowed the same opportunity to give their presentation. And so if you just jumped the gun because this was so exciting, you might wanna go back and check the rules first, because then they could challenge it later after they would have figured it out. So you might wanna check and make certain that you're not out of line here. And again, it sounds like a great thing, I mean, I'm certainly in favor of saving people's lives and helping people get cheap care, but by the same token, local businesses would like the same opportunity. Thank you very much.
Tim Kapalas, two oh five Leafwood Road, Tarpin Springs. Uh, first I want to say, I didn't plan on speaking on this, but after hearing both arguments on this, I wanted to just say, I had, I've had very good experience, I've had to use the hospital five times locally, it's hell and alice as I still will call it, um, but I don't see this as a substitute, what you're looking at for the hospital, I see it as another option for the employees and not to replace the hospital or the accessibility of the hospital. But the reason I came up was that I recall when you signed the agreement on the property, that the hospital wanted a no-compete clause to not allow any doctors to use the facility that they're building that would compete with them in any way, so no x-ray clinics, no, uh, no heart surgeries, nothing like that. So while they want to have a wonderful hospital, which I, I feel they do have, and I've used it, I've been in there five times, unfortunately, uh, but it has been a tremendous experience and very well, it was handled very well. But I also think that this isn't a substitute for this, for the hospital, and that your, your employees will still have that option to use that, and I think that that needs to be clarified, um, but I also want to remind the board did give them an exclusivity to not have any competition in the office building that they're building. Thank you.
Robin Sanger, thirty six Ada Street. Um, I have, this is a first blush, this is a very exciting proposal, it seems like it has quite a bit of potential, but I also have some concerns as far as, have all the collaborative possibilities been looked at? We not only have Florida Hospital North Pinellas in our community, we also have a community health center. So we have two very active viable community health participants right now. I'm wondering if this has been fully explored before we go into a third option that may or may not be needed. So my main concern is looking at the fast-tracking of this, if it's going to be looking, already looking at the contracts and looking at how soon it's going to happen and, and so forth. I just, uh, would ask that the commission take a, a well-rounded look at the entire picture, see all the possibilities that exist, have a conversation with the community health center, with the hospital, and see what other possibilities exist. There are different models around the United States right now, dealing with employee, uh, city employees' health, self-insuring, things like that. So look out, look, uh, look around and see what's available before you just go right to this. I'm not saying that this is not a good option, it may or may not be, but that's the whole point, until you look at everything, we really don't know. Thank you.
Well, I thank everybody for those comments. Uh, one thing I will say is that, uh, this is not absolutely, has not been the first presentation as far as this is concerned, you know. For those that feel like they've been caught off guard is that, you know, it's either that you, you have not been paying attention to what has been happening up here, or something else, because we've, we've kinda talked about this, I don't know, at least month more ago in terms of pursuing this. The city's always been talking about the possibility of trying to do self-insured and, uh, that type of thing and looking at opportunities to provide a better benefit to, um, to the employees, you know. I'm not gonna get livid, I think that we have a great hospital. Uh, I guess I could say I'm concerned is that whenever we've explored anything as far as healthcare's concern, the hospital has been out there and I haven't seen them come and offer any type of services to the city in terms of trying to, um, help our employees here. So I think this goes, you know, two ways, and I don't wanna get into having an adversary relationship with the hospital. I would hope that, you know, uh, Mr. Kusudus would sit down, maybe talk with the city manager, Russell, about what we have been trying to explore and even some of the other people to try to get some background on this whole proposition, and not that just think that it's one that we just entered into blindly and have not went out and looked for this collaboration, Russell, this didn't even come about that way. So as we look at this, hopefully everybody will have an opportunity to have additional questions answered, maybe not in this forum here, but, uh, through the city managers, through our, um, individual that's in charge of, of health as far as this is nipping, to try to get some additional answers as to, um, what is happening, so. I don't know if anybody have any additional comments, questions, or what, I know you got something there. Well, I just, you know, I, you, I don't want you to get livid now. I'm not gonna get livid. All right. No, it's the way these two weeks, there's something in the air, so I'm kinda used to this, this, these half, couple of weeks, um, you know, it's pretty, we've got a insurance carrier, we got someone who we have our health insurance from, um, they bring to us a proposal to be a pilot program by two neighboring cities that's successful, cities that have expended a lot of their budgetary money on that, and we have our health insurance carrier. The hospital's not our health insurance carrier, they're not our first, they're not our people that run our health insurance, um, and we have our health insurance carrier gonna come to us, take a great deal of risk, um, put some things forward, um, with our plan to work with us and get this put together. Um, we've got other cities modeled that's done it, I don't think the other cities went around and petitioned everybody who could possibly do something for you if, um, this is not an exclusive service, I welcome any supplemental thing the hospital wants to offer this, because the employees still have the right to go to their own doctor, go to their own hospital, so if the hospital comes with, with a secondary thing, allow peo- our employees somewhere else to go, I'd be glad for them to join in on their end and, uh, do that, because the employees still can go to their primary physician, they don't have to go to this one, they can go to their own doctors, um, but this is a benefit that a lot of our employees need without six months of trying to, and I don't even know why you go out and, and, and negotiate this when you have your own health insurance carrier and the legal cities who you're dealing with offering you a chance to be a pilot program, it just doesn't make a lot of sense, although obviously we can assume the reasons for it on the other end, so I'll let that go, but, um, you know, while acknowledging that, it doesn't make much sense what's being brought forward to scuttle this, you're just hurting the employees of the city, that's all you're try, that's all that it's doing, and I hope the commission, as they think about it, look at the contract, maybe go out and see Clu- or Dunedin and see how it works, um, they all understand that and move forward, and anybody else who wants to bring forward something else for employees to do along with this, I'd be glad to welcome in my office to talk about it. With that, um, we'll go to our next item, which is item number six, Peace for Tarpin Update, uh, former vice mayor, Robin Sanger. No, duh, I'm sorry, duh, uh, item number five has been canceled, that's the, uh, uh, chamber of, of, of case award. Ms. Thomas is just here because she likes to see what we do.
Hello again. Robin Sanger, thirty six Ada Street, here in Tarpin Springs. Thank you. I'm here to give the commission an update on Peace for Tarpin, let you know what we've been doing, uh, for the past year. I was here just about a year ago and, and a lot of exciting things have happened, uh, since then. One of our main objectives with Peace for Tarpin is to recognize the link between violence and trauma, and as a city, many of the issues that we're facing have direct links to trauma. Uh, it could be street homelessness, it could be domestic violence, uh, self-inflicted violence of teenagers, uh, all types of things like that. And Peace for Tarpin, rather than looking at Band-Aid solutions, we look for the root causes of what, what is, what these behaviors, what is at the root of these behaviors. It's a much less costly approach, it's a forward-thinking approach and it's very progressive. Uh, violence and trauma play out in our lives with both mental health and physical health, and the connection between mental health and trauma and violence is pretty easy to guess. If someone has a bunch of traumatic experiences as a child, they're more likely to be depressed as an adult. One of the things that does not readily come to mind, though, it is not such an obvious link, is the connection with physical health and what we call adverse childhood experiences. The connections are very, very high among physical health issues such as diabetes, autoimmune diseases, cancer, heart disease, lung disease, COPD, and a shortened lifespan. All of those things are very costly. In fact, this is the perfect segue after, after hearing the hospital speak, because as it turns out, almost thirty-seven cents of every dollar spent towards healthcare has a direct link to trauma. It's a huge cost to individuals, it's a huge cost to families, to communities, to our state, to our nation and to the world, personal and financial. In two thousand and seven, the economic impact of the cost of trauma, the direct economic impact for one year, this includes mental health care, hospitalization, child welfare, law enforcement, was over thirty-three billion dollars. These are direct cause, uh, direct links. The indirect was over seventy billion dollars, so we're looking at a huge amount of money spent towards alleviating these types of things. The idea behind Peace for Tarpin is we have so many different organizations, so many passionate people doing good work within our community, and if everyone could look at this through a trauma-informed lens, how might we approach this in a different way? How might we look at this whole thing differently? The idea is we're going to spend our resources more wisely, work with partners, work with collaborations. One example that recently happened with the collaboration was Echo Community Alternatives asked to meet with me so I could present to them what Peace for Tarpin was doing, and they were very, both of the directors from Hillsborough and Pinellas County were very excited and they said, "We wanna be on board, we wanna work with you, what do you want from us?" Well, with Peace for Tarpin, it's a little bit different than that, it's not so much what we want from them, it's like, what's on your radar? What do you need, what are you working on now, what are your key issues? And one of the key issues that Echo Community Alternatives is working with now is youth, young adults aging out of foster care. That's a very slippery slope, a lot of times now that the age has just been raised to twenty-one, but just a few months ago, at the age of eighteen, someone in foster care was basically cut loose, goodbye, have a nice life, good luck, and quite often that slippery slope led to very bad experiences for that individual, including a quick, uh, quick path to homelessness in many instances. So we started looking at how we could work with Echo Community Alternatives and a, a kind of a really interesting solution came about. We looked at our existing Peace for Tarpin partners and Tarpin Springs Housing Authority and the Home Share Program was one of our, is one of our partners, and Pat Weber and the directors of Echo Community Alternatives and myself were thinking about, how could we work together? Maybe we could expand the Home Share Program to kind of focus for, uh, sharing a home with young adults who are aging out of foster care. They get a stipend, but they might not necessarily have life skills, they might not have any type of support system or support network around them. Another piece that came into play was with Provost Conferley Carney at St. Pete College Tarpin Springs campus, because an important component for this picture that we're, we're kind of putting together here is the education piece. So now we have kind of a well-rounded piece that is forming, where we have a safety net for young adults aging out of foster care, putting them into safe housing, and an education component, not to mention the community component that Peace for Tarpin provides with our many other partners. So that's one example of collaboration. Um, we have a lot of eyes on Tarpin Springs now nationally, I get phone calls and emails from around the country from folks who want to talk about what we're doing, who want to learn about what we're doing. It, it always surprises me, um, but quite a few of them are from medical students, from, uh, colleges, from providers around the United States, and recently even one of our local residents, uh, father contacted me, she has just graduated from Uni- University of Florida and is going into pediatrics, and her advising physician, who is a coronary physician, asked her if she knew about Peace for Tarpin. She said, "You're from Tarpin Springs, do you know about Peace for Tarpin?" And the young woman said, "No, I don't, but I'll find out." So she called me and we met at Eco Bean and had a cup of coffee, and, um, as it turns out, she said, "Find out everything that you can, because this is very important in the field of health." And a very exciting conversation ensued, and it's just remarkable the types of connections that are made. Uh, last November, I was asked to speak at the Dane County Trauma Summit. I was their keynote speaker, and when I asked what they wanted me to talk about, they said, "We want to hear what's going on in Tarpin Springs, we wanna know about your community, we wanna know about what Peace for Tarpin is doing in Tarpin Springs." So I spoke for an hour and a half to a group of about two hundred and fifty, uh, they were law enforcement, county officials, city officials and mental health professionals, and they were very eager to learn what, about what we've been doing. Very, very exciting. Um, in June, I've been invited to go to Sausalito to speak, Sausalito, California. I was contacted by an organization, it's a nonprofit called the Institute for the Future, which I'd never heard of, but apparently they've been around for over fifty years, they're very well-known, they're out of Palo Alto, out of Silicon Valley, and their job is to explain to their clients, and by the way, they're, they have a very broad-based client list- client list, such as Center for Disease Control, American Heart Association, multinational corporations, Toyota, Hallmark Cards, John Deere Tractors, a very huge, very impressive client list. And they are tasked to let their clients know what is on the horizon ten years out in the field of health and technology. And the woman who contacted me said that she had been tracking Peace for Tarpon for about a year. And she said that what we're doing with Peace for Tarpon here in Tarpon Springs is about ten years ahead of the curve. So she invited me to come and present what we're doing to a panel of their clients in Sausalito in June. So I thought that was very exciting. It was also very validating because we're a unique model, this has not been done in this way anywhere else. So it's kind of like self-reflecting, is this, is this, you know, what type of, it's kind of hard to gauge how real it is or how important it is, but to have outside eyes come at that level and say, yes, it's very important work that you're doing, was pretty awesome. In the past year, you've probably seen the peace flags flying at Craig Park, it was a public art project, and I know you saw the presentation here. That was very well-received. We've got a lot of publicity around the United States for that, and that project is being duplicated in other cities as well. We've had training. Suncoast Center has recently obtained offices next door to the Tops and Kids Program for families and for children who attend that program. And so this is a mental health facility right next door to the aftercare program. So it's a perfect opportunity if a counselor or staff person notices that something might be going on with the child, it's a direct referral and a direct link, and that is going over quite well. We've been having a series of training provided at no charge to parents about how parents can protect their children from sexual abuse, which is a very rampant issue. One out of four girls, one out of six boys, thirty-nine million children in the United States are current victims of sexual abuse. Unless we start having this conversation and doing something about it, those numbers are not going to go down. So what we are committed to do is have ongoing trainings throughout the community. We had one at the CAP Center recently, and these will be repeated so that when the folks who attended the CAP Center training tell their friends and neighbors about it, when it comes back to the CAP Center, we can reach different people. We had one at Saint Timothy's Lutheran Church, one at Methodist Church, and one at the CAP Center last year as well, I believe. So these ongoing trainings, I think, are very important. We recently were given a grant by the Kramer Foundation, a small grant, to start a Tarpon Women's Interface Network, or TWIN. And this is a way for our faith community members to come together to see how they might address violence and trauma in their lives through their faith, how they might work together, what they might be, what that might look like as a united voice to address trauma and violence in our community. Very, very interesting. We've only, they've only been meeting for a few months. I think the first meeting was at the end of January. And we already have eleven faiths represented and forty-four women. And so that's very exciting. Pastor Val Migan from Church on the Bayou, who's one of our partners, said that next year he'd like to have a similar group for men, so we'll see if we can do that. Last Saturday, we have Peace for Tarpon, our Unity and Community Day. I'd like to thank Vice Mayor Slattery for her opening remarks, very well-received, and thank you for attending and thank you for staying to, for the day. I know we have a huge, y'all have a huge agenda tonight, so I didn't bring PowerPoint, I didn't, I'm tempted, but I thought, no, I know what that's like. But I would like to reference our website. One of the things that is new to our website is on our partners page, you will see a list of all our partners, and then next to many of them, you will see a little thumbnail of their picture. For example, Chief Cochen is there talking about Peace for Tarpon and Tarpon Springs Police Department. Mayor Archie is there for the CAP Center and also is mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs. And many other community partners. So when folks go to our partner page, they don't just see a logo and wonder what's going on with that, they can actually hear basically from those individuals, from the representatives of those organizations, and also individual community partners, how they heard about Peace for Tarpon, what it means to them, how they hope to work within the structure of Peace for Tarpon, and so on and so forth. So that's also very exciting. We also have a very active Facebook page. And if you're on Facebook, I know I'm friends with Commissioner Banther on Facebook, and Commissioner Larson, and I think Jim Yakavone, Mayor Archie, but I think there's some gaps out there that might be filled. So I'm looking, when I, next time I check the Facebook, Peace for Tarpon Facebook update, I hope all those little gaps get filled in. If you're, if you happen to be on Facebook, just go to the page and like it, it's really, really a good page. So our motto with Peace for Tarpon is everyone can offer a piece to this solution, offer the piece you can. And that's peace, P-E-A-C-E, and also P-I-E-C-E. Everyone can offer a piece to this solution. So at any time, I'm available for, to have a cup of coffee and talk if you'd like to learn more about Peace for Tarpon and share information with you. But it's very exciting, it's something we can all be very proud of. It's a unique community model and only in Tarpon Springs. Thank you very much. Oh, are there any questions?
I don't have any questions. But I do thank you for not doing your hour and a half for us. But we thank you and Peace for Tarpon for all that you do in terms of trying to provide awareness to trauma and helping Tarpon to be a better place, you know? I don't know if there are any public comments on this either?
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to item number seven, Backyard Chickens, Ms. Denise Manino.
Honorable Mayor and commissioners, thank you for putting this on the agenda once again. I don't have a PowerPoint either. I thought I'd keep this topic really simple because it's been presented a couple of times already. Things have changed since the last presentation that it has been presented to this commission before. So I just want to introduce myself. I became a resident of Tarpon Springs last August, so I'm very new to this area. We relocated from Seattle, which is a fairly progressive community in terms of sustainability. And sustainability has been very close to my heart for a number of years. I worked for REI, I don't know whether you're familiar with that company, but it's headquartered in Seattle. It's recreational equipment incorporated. It's Sally Jewell, who was the former CEO, is now going to work at the White House as the Secretary of the Department of Interior. During the time that she was with REI, she just moved us in such a visionary way, much closer to sustainable goals. And we had the grand goal of being carbon neutral by the year 2020, and we're using a lot of solar. And it was a fantastic company to work with. And I also interacted quite frequently with corporate social responsibility people. So I have a passion for sustainability that is very, very deep. I ended up helping get rid of all of our solvent tanks and the individual retail stores so that we could actually have obvious cleaners, ultrasonic cleaners. And it eliminated a huge amount of waste that the company produced. I had a major health event a couple of years ago, and we really needed, felt the need to revise our lives, so we started looking for community. I started thinking about five years down the road, really looking in terms of a community that had warmer weather, a little less rain that was constant and dreary. And we went on a long trip during my twenty-year sabbatical, and we went all the way down the coast from Seattle, ended up not finding any place that really resonated with us. And it was quite by chance, our daughter had moved here in October, and we came here February two thousand and twelve, just a visit. And I had no idea that we'd fall in love with this place so much. We came to Tarpon Springs on the very last night that we were here, and I thought, "Why did you wait this last night to bring us to the cutest place ever?", you know? So I just, I just had this excitement about it. And as soon as my daughter heard that I was excited about it, they started looking for houses. And down at the house, it's four seventy East Cypress, so it was in walking distance of this area, and it had a wonderful backyard for the kind of permaculture garden that we were planning to do, which is a garden that you grow that kind of becomes its own food forest. It, all the plants interact with one another, and it draws the right kind of insects, it draws lizards and frogs and bats even that could eat the bugs. But it's kind of a, it's emulating an ecosystem, and that's the whole idea of permaculture. And it's become exceedingly popular in this area. I mean, it's popular all over the country, and it's popular all over the world. If you Google it, you'd find a lot of information on it. In September, which was just one month after we moved here, I started a blog in the patch, Sustainable Tarpon Springs, and my idea was I just wanted to connect with other like-minded people, but it was above and beyond my expectations how many people started connecting with me and, you know, the goals that we shared. And we ended up forming kind of an intentional community here. For a little historical perspective, on my own experience with chickens, I might not be here tonight if it weren't for the fact that my grandmother was, she was able to keep chickens in Columbus, Ohio back during the Great Depression. And she was a widow with five children who managed to survive with her little garden and with her egg-laying chickens. And, you know, that, who knows how that plays into my existence, but, you know, it kept her family going in a very bleak time in history. And that's not the same reason that we have for asking about it again at this juncture. But backyard chickens have been accepted for many generations, so, you know, it's a much shorter period that there's been codes to ban their presence. In my distant past, we owned twenty-five Osterloarks, which are a big black chicken breed from Australia. We had one Rhode Island Red Rooster that convinced me that I would never have a rooster again, never have any desire for a rooster again, he was a bully. And we had a really nice little setup. We were obviously, we're living on three acres then, and I, that's why we could have so many. But they had an outdoor pen, they had an indoor house, and they had a little roosting room. And even though we only cleaned this particular pen out maybe once every six months to add compost to the garden, there was never an odor at all from the chicken house. I mean, it was very contained and they, you know, you know, dug around and straw enough that there was nothing, no problem with that at all. So there's really no need to even start from scratch at this point to reinvent the wheel because there's a lot of communities throughout the US that are adopting ordinances permitting backyard hens. And I'm going to use the word hens, which is a female chicken, because almost everywhere roosters are banned because they are an annoyance with their crowing at any hour of the day. And they can be kind of aggressive at times, so I'm not going to even talk about it, I'm just going to refer to them as backyard hens. But they, all of the places that it's been permitted, it is going so well, but rather than increasing restrictions or having an undue load to code enforcements in different municipalities, what has happened is that, you know, it's been well-supported because the people that are able to have them are so excited and are really taking, you know, a great deal of responsibility for their small blocks. And even in Gainesville, it's an example, they've decided to permit them to have more than four, they've increased the numbers, I don't know, to eight or ten because it's going so well. So people that support the reasons are inclined to be really mindful of the responsibilities to make it work and to really eliminate criticism. Backyard poultry keeping has been permitted residentially for zone properties in unincorporated areas of Pinellas County. And additionally, individual municipalities are permitting backyard hens, simplifying the implementation of the recent approval of the Pinellas County ordinance. I can't remember exactly, I put it in the packet, what that, that date might have been that they passed it. But in addition to the county, Saint Petersburg, Largo, Gulfport, Bel Air, Dunedin, Gainesville, and Manatee, to name a few, have all voted to permit backyard hens. Pasco County is discussing the same topic this evening. I'd hope more of my friends from the permaculture movement up in Pasco would be with us tonight, but they're busy with their own agenda up there. So thirty percent of single-family households in Pinellas County have the legal right to keep backyard poultry for their own use. And I really believe strongly that it should be extended to all of Pinellas County residents by amending the zoning ordinances that prohibit this practice. In the unincorporated areas of Tarpon Springs, families are able to currently have hens, whereas the city residential areas have been banned, yet both have Tarpon Springs addresses. So it would eliminate a lot of confusion if all of Tarpon Springs was permitted to have the backyard hens. We, at our stage in life, didn't want to buy a huge amount of land to be able to do this. I think it's a really urban farming is becoming so popularized that places right in New York City are doing permaculture community gardens, and a lot of times, community chickens or hens are included in that. They're part of insect management and they deposit organic fertilizer generally when they're in a garden, they're in an enclosure that is portable. They have a lot of room to move around, but the enclosure can be wheeled around where it's necessary to have the organic manure or for them to be eating insects. So benefits, there are benefits of keeping them, that I feel will be beneficial to the citizenry of the county and the city of Tarpon Springs is that they do eat insects and weeds, and they also act to till the, till garden areas while providing natural fertilizer. And sandy soil in our community requires additional amounts of organic amendments in order to produce healthy plants. And we, you know, keep a compost, a compost barrel right outside of our kitchen, you know, just to be able to use that as a means of developing organic matter. But being able to add chicken manure to that would be eliminating our need to go all the way out to Oldsmar Dancing Goat Farm, which is, you know, quite a ways away where we have gone and we've brought goat or chicken manure back home. In addition, citizens concerned about healthful foods know that, talk, nothing toxic or harmful was sent to their personal poultry, and that the manure is safe for their gardens. So the keeping of poultry can reduce the local use of pesticides and organic fertilizers and associated pollution with such products and the stormwater runoff in the Tampa Bay and the Gulf of Mexico. Poultry do provide a sustainable food source, daily eggs that can be more flavorful and nutritious. I know that there's some debate on that, one way or another, but at least for me, I would feel more comfortable because I have an ethic against animals not being kept in cruel ways. I don't know whether anyone here has had the trial of watching Food, Inc., but it's an extremely eye-opening but painful movie to watch when you realize how animals that are used for food are treated and how they're kept. And that is, the kind of enclosures that they're kept in is what produces disease. It's not, you know, an urban setting. If we had an emergency here, storm projections show that Pinellas County could become isolated, even maybe an island for some period of time. So having local forms of food is of value, you know, whether it's from our gardens or whether it's from our hens, it would be, you know, much more secure to be able to have local sources of food. And they're outstanding pets, they're really easy to care for, and they, you know, are, provide a lot of educational opportunities for children, where food comes from, how to be responsible pet owners. Watching their poultry and their relationships amongst one another is very entertaining. And it would be a lot healthier than video games, that's for sure. So if you have any concerns, ask any request for an ordinance change to our questions regarding health, safety, and welfare, and that has to be addressed. And they had a, an extensive list of questions and answers, I may have included some of those in your packet. But the noise, contrary to popular belief, is, you know, poultry are not loud at all. They are about as loud as a morning dove. I mean, and they're quieter than a lot of the, just... they're, and they're quieter than a lot of the just, uh, wild birds out there. It's only the roosters that would make a disruptive sound. They're, they're really pretty peaceful and comforting to listen to. They aren't smelly, and that's only when they're kept in concentrated areas and cages that are too small and, uh, really restricted, do they become a smell problem, but they're not smelly at all. And, um, they are not prone to disease if they're properly housed. I had, um, Gary Butcher, Doctor, uh, um, from the U- University of Florida wrote a letter that is part of, um, your packet there, and he explains that he even has them, and he's a veterinarian of, of chickens. And they shouldn't be in any way confused with livestock. I've heard that that is an argument or has been in the past, but they don't require a large animal that, you know, these are just birds that are, you know, smaller than a lot of the dogs in the community, and they're, I can tell you from personal experience, their manure is a lot less offensive than, um, what dogs leave, and fortunately, um, no disease associated. So I think I've touched upon all of the points that I wanted to, and I just thank you again for including, um, this discussion in your agenda, and I hope you'd have had time to, uh, take a look at some of the questions and answers that were in the packet that I submitted, including Doctor Gary Butcher's letter. And that, um, you know, since so many other communities are adopting this successfully, you would find that to be a comfort that there's already models out there. And a lot of the, uh, potential, um, problems have not arisen. They just simply have not been there. It's been all a good experience. They add a tremendous amount to the urban gardening movement. And I think that one of the most important things that I'd just like to add in conclusion is that, uh, when Commissioner Terapone was talking about, um, the economic development of this area, I just see so strongly that to make Tarpon Springs a really forward-thinking community that would really be appealing to young families and couples who want to make their lives here, that is the future. The more, you know, you have a younger population making a decision to make this wonderful place their home, the longer we're, the more economic stimulus we have in this community. And sustainability is, has become a huge, um, very popular, growing movement throughout the entire US. And it has brought a lot of very, very promising actions to many communities throughout this country. You should just look it up on Google, and you'd be very amazed and surprised. Thank you so much for your time, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Well, thank you for your presentation. I'm not sure, uh, is there any questions for this, um, uh, something?
I don't have any questions. I have some comments I'd like to make if you'd appreciate.
Would like to.
Thank you. Um, I'd first like to thank Ms. Menino for being here and for making this presentation, uh, this evening. Uh, I think there's a, a number of interesting agenda items tonight where we have the opportunity to make sure that we're on the right side of the current trends. Um, we're looking to be proactive to find ways to promote better healthcare. Uh, and when you look at what we're doing with the Wellness Center, what we might do at the Wellness Center, uh, the presentation, uh, from former Vice Mayor Sanger regarding peace for Tarpon, uh, and then when you also look at the agenda item in regards to the Forbes property, and we're talking about trying to find ways to live and work and play all within a walkable, uh, community, uh, that's again trying to keep us, keep the city of Tarpon Springs on the right side of the current trend. Uh, related to that, the next agenda item, number eight, is going to be talking about solar energy. Once again, the city of Tarpon Springs is trying to make sure that we're on the right side of the current trends, and I think this agenda item is very similar to that. I think it's appropriate that we join with Pinellas County, uh, and allow backyard chickens with a very similar ordinance to what the, uh, county has already passed. Uh, as part of that ordinance, it's my understanding that homeowners associations that don't wish to allow chickens could continue, uh, to not allow chickens as they see fit. Uh, but overall, I think this is really part of the trend, as Ms. Menino's mentioned. Um, it's all about sustainability and moving toward, uh, having a more sustainable community. And I, for one, would be in support of joining in, having something very similar to the Pinellas County ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Abanta?
Thank you for coming tonight. Um, self-reliance is a very important, uh, you know, issue with me. Um, Riley, you can't have chickens, and I can't keep my tomatoes, my, uh, two, uh, my, my two, uh, like, uh, those tomato plants alive. So, uh, I wouldn't have chickens probably. But, um, I, 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 I am in support of what, uh, Commissioner Lar- 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 Larson said, uh, though, uh, uh, of us adopting, uh, the same ordinance that, that's in, uh, Pinellas County, and making sure that we do allow HOAs and, and, uh, similar places to ban chickens if they, uh, don't want that, because people voluntarily elect to live in, uh, in, in, yeah, in, in those places. But I thank you for coming tonight.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Tarpan?
Thank you. Um, just a little background for myself. Uh, Ms. Menino, I'm saying that correctly, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I grew up with chickens. I grew up on five acres on the Anclot River, um, and then we always had chickens, and my dad raised pigs, and we always had a steer. So, um, I believe in sustainable living. I always have. Um, when we moved uptown to Spring, to Spring Bay, we also had chickens. Um, so I graduated from Auburn University with a degree in business and economics through the School of Agriculture. Um, so sustainable living is something that I believe in. Um, agriculture is something that I believe in, partake in. Um, I think it's a good, a good way for early, uh, child development, um, to be around chickens and animals and, and agriculture in general. Um, it is a way of the future. There's no doubt about that, um, as is aquaculture and any other form of, of, uh, food development as we move forward and our population grows, et cetera. Um, just a, a quick statistic, uh, China loses a million acres of agricultural production every year. So, um, I think it's, it's important, and it is a way of the future, and I also would support it. Um, I do, I do have concerns with the de-restricted communities, um, you know, the de-restricted neighborhoods within the area. Certainly that, you know, they would be, be able, be able to elect to not have chickens, um, but I support it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I happen to sit on this board the last two times that this was presented to us.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I don't know, I mean, I, I, I support sustainability. Don't, you know, I do. I'm not sure if some of the areas in our community, some, you know, um, down the SpongeBob area, I mean, the lots are small, very close, you're very close to, you're on top of one another down there. If that's the right area for this, I'm not sure. Um, but I had a question, and I just wanna make sure that when it comes to the HOAs, um, they supersede the, what we, if we were to enact an ordinance, and they say that they won't allow it, the HOA, you have to buy with the HOA move bar, correct?
Um, yes, uh, we can draft an ordinance that would make absolutely clear. Be my opinion that, um, homeowners association rules can prohibit things that might otherwise be allowed. So, but we can draft the ordinance to make that clear, that deed-restricted community or, or, uh, any, uh, any homeowners association can, uh, which bylaws or regulations prohibit it.
Okay, but, but then there's the issue that I live in this community, which does, is not deed-restricted, and right next door is a deed-restricted community. So I could back up to a neighbor that has chickens, correct?
Right. As long as that property's not part of the restrictions, then...
And I, you know, I just wanna say that I read, um, Doctor Butcher's letter, and I turned the fence to what he says here, um, that he read the te- he, he did come to the commission with some testimony several years ago, and, um, he's disappointed to hear that some of his testimony was distorted by individuals with their own agendas. Well, I didn't have my own agenda. Um, he was specifically asked certain questions, and, um, you know, are, are, are they more healthy, are eggs more healthy? And he, uh, eggs that are hatched in your backyard more healthy than, than store-bought eggs? And, and he said, "No, they're not." So, I mean, these are, you know, some of the, that's one of the facts that he brought to our attention. But I, you know, it's just, I don't know, I, I'm just kind of offended by what he says, that we didn't have our own, I didn't have my own agenda. I was trying to look to him for the facts. He came on supporting the chickens, and then at the end of his presentation, um, he was a little distorted on some of what he was saying. I don't know. I'm, I'm not fully convinced that this is the right, um, is right for our community at the right now. You know, I did state years, couple years ago, that I would support it if, uh, you had one acre of land or more, that I could see. I'm not, you know, um, how big the lots are, other than the SpongeBob area, because I know they're small. Are they quarter-acre lots typically in?
Hmm.
No?
Like, uh, like R seventy, seven thousand per acre?
Okay, yeah, so...
But, but at the same time, a number of years ago, we had lambs tethered in the SpongeBob.
Yeah.
Same.
Right. And look what happened on Keenstone. But anyway, um, I don't, I'm, I'm not totally sold on the idea yet, but, um, you know, I'm willing to listen to what others have to say. Thank you.
And what I'd like to do is, I'm gonna go to public comments, 'cause I wanna move past this item, but it's not gonna be decided tonight. So therefore, uh, whatever input, uh, all the commissioners know what you need to do to put it as a agenda item. Uh, I do think that if they bring this forward, there's some other things that need to be done with the ordinance in terms of tweaking it, to make sure that it's not only just homeowners associations, you know? And that's a beautiful thing to say that they don't have to worry about it. But then everybody else that don't have a homeowners association that have, uh, they won't have the opportunity to opt out. So there are other things that need to be considered. But what I'd like to do, Ms. Menino, if you would allow us to open up a public comment, we thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Anybody that would like to speak on this item, come forward, state your name, address on the record. You have a few minutes.
Tim Tofolos, two oh five Leafwood Road. I spoke out when this was brought up before by then Vice, uh, Mayor Robin Sanger, and I still personally am against it. But if the commission chooses to move forward with it, I want you to remember that animal control is basically handled by Pinellas County, and any ordinance that you pass should parallel, as Commissioner Larson stated, should parallel, um, the county. Um, I live in Oakley Village. It's the largest homeowners association in Tarpon Springs with four hundred and fifty homes. They don't have the funding to, to go and sue people to get rid of the animals. So to put an undue burden on a homeowners association is going to be awkward. It's gonna cause police issues for the chief, I'm sure, because homeowners are gonna be against homeowners, and we don't need any more of that in, in this town. And I think that, uh, you need to carefully look at it if you choose to, uh, implement it. I think you need to parallel the animal control regulation. I looked at Pinellas County's, they allow, I believe, four. They have to be caged. They have to have fences around them. There is ver- you have it, I guess, in front of you from the, uh, discussion, but, um, I think it needs to parallel that if you choose to move forward with it. Thank you.
Two seven three, Jure Boulevard, Calavista. Um, I definitely agree with them that we should definitely make sure that there are cages, or they're enclosed at least, to where they're not being able to just run loose around the neighborhood just like a cat or a dog. And I think everybody knows that hens are much quieter than dogs, and we still love our dogs. And I, for one, definitely do not have enough money to get a full acre lot. However, I would still love to be able to have chickens and my own eggs, and, um, if they're not quite as healthy, then, um, that's, you know, my choice to make. People decide to eat at McDonald's and be unhealthy, that's their choice. However, I would prefer to be able to grow some food and have some, uh, chickens if I so choose to, and that would definitely help me decide where the next place I am going to live is. Thank you.
Her name's Kara Die. We live at six oh one Bananas Street. She'd like to say something.
I've had one of the chickens for, um, for, since I was two years old, and I really would like to keep her.
I'd just like to say that I think it's a great idea, and I totally support permaculture and gardening. I think that times have changed, and we need this in our life. It's good for the community. It brings us together, let's share. Um, they're not dirty. They're very kind creatures that offer a lot. They offer food for the garden, they offer food for my family. And I think that it would be a good idea if we did change the code and follow Pinellas County. Thank you.
Marty Peters, seventeen oh two Heritage Jokes Court. Um, I guess I'll be able to start by saying bah humbug. Uh, I'm gonna speak against this, and, uh, I have some reasons for it, and, uh, that's totally not a popular thing to do tonight. Um, I gave you an article of commissioners, uh, earlier that I, I just Googled online. I, I know everybody's saying that the, uh, chickens are very healthy and it's a wonderful thing to have. Uh, but this article was, uh, dated April twenty-six, twenty thirteen, so it's current. Uh, and it's, uh, from CNN, and it says, um, the World Health Organization says that the H7N9 virus, one of the most lethal so far. Uh, and it talks about the outbreak, uh, from poultry, uh, back in two thousand and four and two thousand and seven. That claimed three hundred and thirty-two lives, but the new one coming out of China now seems to be even more severe, according to this article. There's a number of other articles online, too. If you, you pull them out, you can take a look at them. Uh, it's being sold that these are wonderful and very clean and very healthy, and I'm sure they are when they're properly cared for. Uh, one of the speakers here said she recently moved to Tarpon Springs. Uh, so you, you may not know Florida as well as some of us who've been here a little longer. Um, let me talk about cats for just a minute. Uh, their cats are clearly wonderful, beautiful, fun at things. You can tell that by all of the, uh, YouTube videos. And if you go around in Tarpon Springs, you can see an awful, uh, well, I won't say an awful, uh, lot, but you can see a number of places where, uh, we have a terrible problem with feral cats because people just think cats are wonderful, and they just keep getting more and more of them. And they don't take care of them. And I suspect some of the people are not gonna be taking care of chickens because we're from Florida. Um, by the way, eggs cost a dollar fifty-nine per dozen right now in Publix. I noticed that today. Uh, you might also wanna consider the cost of the ordinance. That's something that the taxpayers here are gonna have to pay for. And I wonder if this has really been a problem. Has, have there been any arrests for people setting up chickens in the backyard? Have there been any code enforcement where people have been cra- uh, cracking down on this? Or is it just kinda something we can kinda ignore if we didn't have to come here and say, "Fine valley chickens are good. Everybody ought to have some," and which case, uh, people could go about their own business? I also wonder if your neighbors have signed on to all of this? If they all think that that's a good idea? Have you, have you talked to them about, um, do they want you to have chickens in your yard? And if you have all of your neighbors on your block, they're on Cypress or wherever, uh, and they said, "Yeah, this is a good thing," then, then I think that gives a little bit more credibility to it. My hunch is that some of them aren't gonna like it. For a homeowners' association, you're gonna put an expense on homeowners' associations if you pass this, because right now, I don't believe that our covenants at Harbor Oaks Homeowners Association say anything about chickens, because who would've thought it? We did have, uh, one instance earlier, uh, when we first moved in, about twelve years ago, where somebody had a rooster and some chickens, and, uh, that, they were processed out, and I'm not sure what the procedure was, whether that was, uh, code enforcement, police, or letters from the... police, or letters from the management company, and- and how it worked. But, uh, right now, my hunch is that there's an awful lot of homeowners associations out there, that you're gonna establish a legal fee for them to go ahead and change their ordinances if they wanna opt out, and, believe me, most of them are gonna wanna opt out, because there's gonna be the- the people in the homeowners association that show up for the meetings and stuff that are gonna say, "No, we don't want that." And, uh, then with those changes, uh, I don't know, three hundred dollars, thousand dollars, you're gonna put that on all the homeowners associations? Not a very, uh, good, um, election plan. At any rate, thank you.
Hi, Tommy Frain, six two four Penn Street, Tarpon Springs. Um, I definitely wanna come up in support of allowing the chickens in the backyard, and just while one thing's fresh in my mind, I don't understand why we'd add so much to the homeowners association to ask them to get rid of the chickens. Um, I know I used to live in a homeowners association growing up, and we had to make sure that we had our, like, lawn mowed a certain way, so if they're able to decide, like, the little things like that, um, I think we can trust them to go ahead and decide if they want chickens in their neighborhood or not. Um, but definitely, um, and just to speak from, uh, personal experience, I've been buying eggs now from a friend of mine for the past eight months, helping them give a little bit of money for feed, because they have chickens in their backyard. Um, I went and visited them, um, it does not smell, um, the noise is like nothing. Um, and that's one of the things that I was concerned of when I first started hearing about this, um, I believe it was the last, uh, election with, uh, Commissioner Terrapani. Um, so I definitely, you know, from personal experience, you know, and I think a lot of the objection comes from people that have never actually gone out to see how chickens are raised, um, and to bring up the cat issue, I mean, well, then let's outlaw cats as well, and that- that would be the same logic. You know, just 'cause some people don't do it, you know, it doesn't make sense. Um, if my neighbor doesn't like that my house is green, I don't live in a homeowners association, so I can keep my house green. You know, and not to, you know, sound rude, but, um, you know, these chickens are not, um, you know, do not hurt the people around them at all. Um, and if it does become a problem with smell or noise, you then tackle the issue then, you don't proactively go ahead and destroy everybody's right to do it, just because some might not do it the correct way. Um, the eggs are, I don't know about health here, but they taste a lot better than Publix. I will not buy eggs from a store again, um, because I did start eating those eggs. Um, and I see ourselves as a, um, a community pushing for community gardens and progressive thinking, and I think this is just another step to continue that. So, uh, thank you very much.
Um, Deanne Dardetti, three thirty Pineapple Street. Um, just wanted to, um, speak up in support of allowing chickens for all of Pinellas County. I have lived in several places where I personally had, um, chickens in my backyard, and I have, um, several places that I've lived had neighbors who had chickens in their backyard. Um, and over the years, um, some of the things that I've learned are, um, how pleasant they are to be around, how quiet they are, um, how easy they are to take care of, um, and how basically, um, harassment-free they are. When I have lived in places where I've had chickens, I have actually gone out and discussed it with my neighbors, because I was curious, because I was hearing these conversations, and I never once heard from anyone, "Oh, we- we don't like that idea." One hundred percent of the time, in my experience, the comments I was hearing were, "Oh, that's wonderful, what is that like?" I was hearing curiosity. People were becoming educated about chickens from what I had picked up in my experience. Um, there was egg sharing going on, people were having extra eggs, and they were sharing with their neighbors. And I- I don't know what the statistics are, but it is my understanding that the diseases that are coming from these creatures are basically coming from creatures who are kept in unnatural situations, where they are not allowed to move properly or eliminate properly, and there are too many in one space, which I don't think is typically the case in a residential area, when someone just has a few as pets or as a food source. Um, I guess that's- that's basically, that's basically it. Thank you.
Chris Roboski, one six zero two, Gulf East Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, three four six eight nine. Thank you, Mr. Terrapani, uh, for understanding the importance of permaculture and allowing people to grow, not only vegetables in their yard, but also chickens, right? This has been, uh, widely accepted, uh, by many cities, which have much smaller lots than we have. And the thing that you might not understand completely about how important this is, is to decentralize the production of food. The old model of monoculture and having some big agricultural company to bring your food to you, they're gonna take care of it all for you, trust them. They burn millions of gallons of diesel fuel, delivering those eggs and those vegetables to these grocery stores, and then they, what doesn't get utilized, gets thrown in the garbage. If that cost were added, then you would see how expensive this stuff is. However, it is subsidized, just like the corn industry. Why do you think high fructose corn syrup is in so many products? It's subsidized by you and me. We're paying for all that, all that diesel fuel, all the hidden costs, so that they can charge you a buck fifty-nine for that, uh, carton of eggs. Think about it, if these people with their chickens ate those eggs, they'd have to drive them, right, to each store, and that fuel cost would be on them. They would have to add that to the cost of their eggs, in order to make a profit, right? Unless they got subsidized. So, you gotta compare apples to apples here, eggs to eggs. This, uh, this thing isn't what it seems on the front, on the face of it. You have to look a little deeper, and when you do, you'll see that this thing is self-sustaining. The manure from the chickens helps the plants, the plants then can feed the chickens, and then the leftover from each, the person consumes. It's the way to go, to help free us from that subsidized monoculture, which is a danger to all of us, all of our way of life. When the water is used way over there, or let's say here in Florida, you grow something, our water goes into that. When that product is taken out of here, our water that it took to make that happen goes with it. What a waste, all those gallons of water, right? They spray on the fruit and- and that's just to ship it, so that it doesn't, uh, go bad in the wintertime, right? They put the ice on there after spraying all that water. That cost hasn't been factored in. And then the fuel to ship it to California or to Missouri, what, why wouldn't we just keep that stuff here, local? Why are there oranges that have stamps from California on them in the grocery store? When we make them here? This is something that can be addressed locally, and people locally will thrive when they embrace permaculture. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? If not, we'll be moving to item number eight, uh, pace update. Paul, uh, listen, now, from my former colleagues, I- I would expect that they would move a little forward, understanding that we do have an agenda.
I- I know, I know, I'll be brief. Robin Sanger, thirty-six eighty Street, here in Tarpon Springs. I was drawn by a magnet, I couldn't not talk about chickens. Um, to address the H one N one virus, Gary Butcher, Dr. Butcher mentioned that there's never been a case of borsemil in the western hemisphere, so I think we're- we're safe at this point. Um, also, addressing lot sizes, I figure if Manhattan can have chickens, Tarpon Springs can have chickens. I- I know the population's very dense, and the lots are very small, land is very precious. They can also have bees, they can have all kinds of things. I appreciate, uh, Commissioner Banther, and Commissioner Larson, and Commissioner Terrapani, I appreciate your support on this. I think it's important. I think that the way for Tarpon Springs to grow is, yes, through sustainability, yes, permaculture, all those things, but a very important point was made, one way that we're gonna keep Tarpon Springs sustainable is by having young families move here. And if that's what young families are interested in, we better listen to them, because that's going to make us continue to thrive. Um, when we were talking about walkable community years ago, it was said that what you wanna see in your city is people pushing strollers, because that means your city is- is growing, it's in a positive way. So, uh, hopefully, this is going to, uh, go through, and we'll have the ability to have backyard chickens in Tarpon Springs. Thank you.
Thank you. And- and as we, ma'am, I- I'd just like to tell you, we- we love clapping, but not inside here. What I'd like to let everybody know is this, is that this is a presentation tonight, and any one of the commissioners that said that they're for it, even I, who did not say anything about it, can bring it forward as an agenda item. So, anybody that didn't have a chance to talk tonight, this is not gonna be the most important time, it's gonna be when it's an agenda item, and it's voted on, and everybody understands that this is something that's happening here. So, those of you that didn't have a chance to talk tonight, you can, at a later date, if this is an agenda item. So, as we move forward to the next item, which is our pace update.
Good evening, I'm Paul Smith, Public Services Director, and I do understand I'm at the end of a long list of presentations. I do have a PowerPoint, but I'm gonna scare you by moving through it rather quickly, because it has been in the backup. So, um, I wanna spend as much time as you want on it, I'll be happy to answer questions, and, uh, but I'll try to keep it relatively brief. In fact, the screen's not coming on, so maybe that's a sign. Okay, I'm just gonna speak from the screen here, because, uh, can't get the screen to get to come on. But, uh, tonight's presentation is regarding solar energy and energy conservation initiatives. There's really two items I wanted to talk about tonight. And I'll- I'll start with the background, um, talking about these items, the city's solar demonstration project that we did at the wastewater treatment plant. We also have property assessed clean energy that I wanna update you on, and finally, I have a recommendation for you regarding that PACE or Property Assessed Clean Energy program. So by way of background, uh, there's been a lot of interest in- in- on this topic, and the Budget Advisory Committee, the City Manager, Board of Commissioners, and the public have expressed interest in the city pursuing solar power and energy conservation initiatives. And staff's been working on it, thank you, Mark. So I'm working on these initiatives through three primary focus areas. First, we've done a citywide energy audit, and then a resulting energy performance contract, and that's with the company of Maresco, and that's already been approved and it's underway. Secondly, we had an in-house, uh, solar demonstration project, we're just about complete with it. We've essentially completed construction, we're working through startup right now, and I'll tell you a little more about that. And then finally, uh, reviewing and feasibility evaluation of a citywide, or even a larger geographic area, property assessed clean energy program. So we're on the screen now. So staff, I'm gonna talk about the demonstration project, we've been working on a rooftop solar project for over a year. The first part of the planning was selecting the proper location. As you can imagine, solar, we- we need some- some area to work with, and, uh, it should be a project that isn't too expensive, just to get our feet wet with this sort of thing. Our original concept was to place panels on the roof of our reclaimed water storage tanks, that's some open area there to work with. But we saw quickly that with the curved surface, that really created a complex and costly project, especially one that we would be starting out with. So, we decided on the roof of the wastewater treatment plant chlorine building as a good starting point for the project. First thing we needed to do was make railing so that it was safe to access that rooftop, so staff worked on doing that sort of work in-house. In fact, as I'll say in a minute, the whole project was completed with staff. Then we mounted equipment and wiring, and here's a picture here, those small silvery-looking rectangles are called microinverters, and they represent some of the latest technology as part of solar energy. And finally, installation and connection of the solar panels themselves. So some project facts. Uh, first of all, this project was completed by our staff, in fact, in the picture there is our meter backflow technician, John Bacon, who happens to have a personal interest in this sort of technology. I understand he's done some things at his own home, so he was a perfect candidate as someone to work on this project for us, and he's very knowledgeable in this whole thing. We put in twenty solar panels as part of the project, and they're each manufactured by Sharp Electronics, they're two hundred and forty watts each, polycrystalline panels. And we utilized twenty of the microinverters for more efficient power transfer, and let me just explain, a microinverter, what it does, is these panels produce direct current, or DC, or most things we use it for are alternating current, or AC, so that is a key component, the microinverter converts that from DC to AC. And having individual smaller ones has proven to be more efficient, so that's why they're called microinverters. So we're using the latest things here as the project. As far as the performance, the project puts approximately twenty to twenty-five kilowatt-hours out per day, and put that in perspective, the average household uses slightly more, about twenty-six kilowatt-hours per day. So this small twenty-panel project is approaching that of a household's energy usage. The expected life is somewhere around thirty years, and if you start to add that up, it's sorta like putting quarters into a piggy bank. Over time, it can be really significant. I put a statistic here to kinda put it in perspective. The enclosed steam power plant, the big one over here that we see, is a thousand megawatt facility. And over the life of thirty years, this will put out about two hundred and fifty-one megawatt-hours. Now, I have to correct myself, I have that wrong one there. That- that would actually be a quarter of an hour's worth of the whole plant's capacity, but that's still a lot of energy. But energy aside, I wanna remember that there are other environmental benefits to this system, in addition to the electrical savings. We all hear about the fossil fuel plant, and the CO2, the greenhouse gases, and the other things like they call SOx and NOx, which is our sulfur dioxide and our nitric oxide, things that create acid rain and other environmental problems. There's a calculator online that you can use, and, um, based on the energy output of this project, you're talking about a hundred and seventy-seven metric tons of carbon dioxide emissions that could be avoided with this. And similarly, there's reductions of sulfur dioxide and nitrogen oxide that could be expected as well. So in summary, just closing that project, uh, completed in-house, I would consider it a success, we're going through the final startup phases of the project, and expect to get a benefit over the life of the project. In terms of economic performance, the- the whole project cost about fifty thousand dollars to complete, and if you apply the energy to that, I did a rough calculation of about twenty-one to twenty-two cents per kilowatt-hour for the life of the project. Compare that to current energy rates of maybe twelve to thirteen cents per kilowatt-hour, you can see why, right now, why we're hesitant to do large-scale projects. But I truly believe that over time, that that balance is gonna continue to start tipping as, uh, energy goes up, as solar costs go down, and hopefully, more incentives are put out there for us to use. So, um, that's exciting, I think there's some- some, definitely some future to that. I wanna shift over to property assessed clean energy, and I'll start off by just explaining what it is. This allows for the cost of qualified improvements, and I'll talk about what those are, to be repaid through a special assessment on a property tax bill. And this is a voluntary program, it's important to note, where customers will willingly choose to participate and procure their own improvement. Um, and qualifying improvements often include energy efficiency, but also could include water efficiency and wind resistance measures. And this is primarily designed to overcome that first cost barrier that we usually see with, uh, projects like this. And- and that might be either the people don't have the money, or maybe not enough motivation to overcome a- a large initial cost. So we've been tracking the progress- the progress of the PACE throughout the state, with an eye towards possibly doing something here. And what we've seen so far is that there's been enabling legislation here in Florida, and there's also been, uh, several authorities created, but as far as I can tell at this point, there are still very few actual projects being completed. There's- they're starting to develop a pop- a pipeline, but we're still, uh, in the beginning in Florida here, for PACE. So we issued a request for a- PACE. So we issued a request for information in March to get information from those out there, what kind of things we might be able to do. And we got three responses. And I can just summarize for you that there were different approaches to how this was done, and some of them conflicted with each other, which made it sort of tough for me to give you a distilled, single answer to this sort of thing. One of the big questions in mind was, do we include residential customers in the PACE or not? Or do we just go with a commercial PACE program? So what are others doing in our area? As far as I know, there's, the City of Gulfport's done something, and the City of Pinellas County, or the county, is thinking of doing something. And that's all that I know of here in Pinellas. Now, the City of Gulfport's entered into a commercial PACE, no residential, uh, program with a third-party administrator. There was public concern over residential PACE risk, and accordingly, the council was concerned about residential PACE. There's a risk to the mortgage holders that they saw, but also a concern was raised that the average homeowner may be more vulnerable to making a costly decision. That would be a long-term part of their property. This, this, just one example, be overpaying for improvements, maybe, um, not getting enough different quotes, those sorts of things. Not maybe understanding what the whole program entailed in terms of risks and liabilities. So right now, uh, the City of Gulfport has no current PACE project starting, but there's some interest in, uh, from developers in the city. As far as Pinellas County, I'd like to say I see advantages to the county having a PACE program with the city participating. It provides an economy of scale, a greater selection of contractors for customers to choose from. And there appears to be enough growing interest to get a county PACE program started perhaps soon. There's a, a county commission discussion scheduled for June fourth. I'll be watching that closely to see how that develops. And it appears, I, I've spoken with some staff at, at the county that a commercial-only PACE program may be part of the discussion for the same basic reasons. I heard some of the similar concerns, um, as Gulfport. So recommendation, well, participating in the county-wide PACE program would be beneficial. It creates a greater local geographic area, an economy of scale. There's more contractor interest, more competition, more options, and better prices. One of the things that I saw in researching this is I really think the contractors are a key component to this program working. In many of these programs, the contractors are even responsible for the marketing, getting the word out to people about these programs. The contractors have to be certified in a lot of cases. They have to have special training. So they need to be attracted to the program. And I just think that if you have a whole county for them to possibly work in versus a smaller area like Tarpon Springs, I think it's a better chance for having a viable program with lots of options. And in the end, I think better financial, better terms for customers. So with that, I would recommend you consider authorizing the mayor to send a letter of support to the county PACE program and the June fourth, uh, county commission agenda item for consideration. You'll see that letter, uh, for you to consider authorizing in your consent agenda coming up on this same agenda. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions at this point.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you, Mr. Smith, for this presentation. I think this is a very important topic. I think it was a little over a year ago that I first placed PACE on our agenda. And I'm glad that, uh, staff has stayed with it. And, uh, I'm glad to see that the county is looking to move in that direction. Uh, so I guess I would first like to say that I, for one, am fully in support of sending the, uh, the recommendation letter, uh, what, sending a letter to the county. I'm, I'm fully in support of that. Um, I wonder if you could repeat? I didn't, I didn't quite hear. I don't think I did in the presentation. You, you mentioned the cost for, I know it's fifty thousand dollars, but then you mentioned the cost for the actual energy produced. Could you go into that again, please?
Sure. Uh, what I did is essentially use that lifetime kilowatt hours, and I took that and, you know, divided it from the cost of the project to fifty thousand, and it came out to around twenty-two cents per kilowatt hour. And I compared that to my memory of recent electric bills. I think they're somewhere around thirteen cents. That depends on how much you use. It's one of the, it's kind of a complicated structure. There's a fuel charge and some other things, but...
Is that, I'm sorry to be, is that what you expected going into it? Like, is that what's going on right now with solar? That it typically is gonna cost around twenty-two cents compared to thirteen cents?
It's consistent with what we heard originally from Maresco when they did the energy audit. They said it was about double the cost of, uh, energy right now. So that, that seems to bear out with our own experience there. But they also said, as I agree, that as incentive programs continue to come about, energy prices go up. This will continue to change in favor, I think, of solar.
When, when we spent the fifty thousand dollars on those twenty panels, did we look into grants? Were there any grants available?
Yes, we did. There's an annual grant program put on by Progress Energy. Unfortunately, the timing really didn't work out for us on that particular issue because when it was open, we're still looking at the curved tank surfaces, and it was just too complex to get something together in time. So instead of waiting a whole other year cycle, we, we thought it would be good to get started on a relatively modest program here and, and get some more experience. Certainly, uh, with the city manager's support, I don't see us being done with expanding these types of programs. We'll just make sure they make sense for us economically as well.
Especially as we continue to look for grants opportunities to lower the fifty thousand dollar, uh, front-end cost. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any, uh, public comments in the time?
Come forward with your name, address. You've got four minutes in the rush.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mark Ogles. I work for the Likes Brother Company in Tampa, Y-Green. And we appreciate that great proposal and support you sending a letter to the county. Um, we were one of the respondents to your RFI and are really glad that you're doing. I just wanted to add two things that you may not know about PACE. We're doing fourteen, uh, cities across Florida right now. We're funding seventy-two million down in Cutler Bay and Miami just in two weeks. It's getting very popular. Probably it should have been called PATH, not PACE in Florida, because most people, believe it or not, are not utilizing it for energy efficiency. They're using it for hurricane hardening. And as I've been out across the state, I've met with the governor and I've been in twenty counties. The best kept secret is, and the insurance industry doesn't want people to know, is that PACE, PACE is really their solution to the citizen's insurance issue and their property insurance cost. Because by going through and using the PACE program and doing simple things like putting in hurricane clips and a new windows and, and new doors, they have to lower your, uh, cost and your insurance up to seventy percent. It's amazing. So that somebody might elect to borrow the five thousand or ten thousand it takes to do their home or business, but their insurance will go down seventy percent, which could be more than several thousand in a year. So that's just very exciting. Another thing I want to commend you on moving forward on PACE is on the water conservation and water quality, because, uh, some of the communities are using it to fund unfunded basin board matching funds, gray water line distribution, things like wa- uh, water runoff problems. Those can all be addressed. And it's probably gonna be a really big issue with the stormwater fee that, uh, the county's gonna be coming up with. My sources tell me it will pass and they're gonna do it. But, um, and that will become an annexation issue too, because there's more cost if you're outside of the city and less cost if you're in the city. The last thing I would add is whether or not the county does it, or if they may not do it timely, you do have some people out there, some local governments that will be asking you to join them. I'm not at liberty to give you the names right now, but there's a couple that think very highly of the city that would like to work with you on it at no expense or, or cost to you. Any questions?
Thank you for that, uh, little comment there.
Appreciate the long evening you had.
Chris Robowski, one six zero two, Gulf East Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, three four six eight nine. Um, once again, uh, thank you for this great step forward by the city. And this is, uh, this will lead you into the future, and many cities will be doing this in your wake. These solar panels are extremely durable and, uh, the longevity, I mean, they're, they last a minimum of twenty years at optimum output. And then after that, it's diminished very small amount. And I have yet to hear of a lifespan of these old-style solar panels because they haven't stopped working. So they don't even know how long they will continue to produce electricity. Of course, at a diminishing rate after twenty years. Again, I would also like to mention that these projects can be done small scale as well. Like I had mentioned to you before, by picking one list station and putting in a, uh, DC motor pump with a solar panel to run it during the day. At night, it switches back to the electric, right? And the electric one never goes away. So if the DC one were to malfunction, then the electric one you've already got there would continue to function. So there's no risk, really. Just a little bit of cost to set it up. And the experts that you had here last time said that they were very interested in that, but they hadn't done it yet. So again, that could be another way that Tarpon Springs could be a pioneer in this. And I guarantee you will find money for that, uh, because that would be such a boon for so many cities to be able to do that. You know, the cost is higher in the daytime from the electric company, which brings us to another point. I mean, if you, if Tarpon Springs and other cities would combine and actually fight back, we could get back our money, the nuclear tax money, the money that we've been taxed to pay for that nuclear power plant that's probably never going to be built. And that's our money. Our citizens here, ratepayers are paying for that. The city's paying for that too. So we could get that money back, right? Then you could fund any solar project you want. Remember that Senate Bill eight-eight-eight? Gave them the right, if you wanna call it that, to steal from us, to take our money. They call it, uh, cost recovery, advanced cost recovery, right? How about we recover our money from them? Progress Energy, now Duke. No reason to let them continue to steal from the city and steal from the residents. We can get that money back. And then you can fund whatever solar project you want. You don't need a grant from Progress Energy. Just give us our money back. Thank you.
There are no other public comments. We'll go to our consent agenda. Number nine is minutes, April sixteenth, two thousand thirteen, regular session, and May seventh, uh, two thousand thirteen, regular session, satisfaction release of liens. Eleven Attorney Things, Thompson, Sides, Moses Dallas hearing, and a hearing, LLP, invoice six-nine-nine-one-zero, invoice six-nine-nine-eight-three, invoice six-nine-nine-eight-four. Special events, uh, food, truck rally, mercers associations, uh, June twenty-second, Opa, Opa Paluso Festival, mercers association, June twenty-ninth, authorized execution of memorandum of understanding with the county sheriff for continuation of pr- prisoner transportation services, approved local business tax application for, uh, six-twenty-three Local Street, uh, fifteen authorized merely executed letter of support for county's PACE program to the Board of County Commissioners, sixteen authorized utilization of county's cooperative contract number one-two-three-dash-zero-one-four-eight-dash-b, L-N, piston, chain link, and miscellaneous, seventeen award bid number one-three-zero-zero-six-three-dash-b-dash-TK, pump, uh, six inches emergency, award bid number one-three-zero-zero-eight-zero-dash-b-dash-CM, sidewalks, new and replacements. Anything anyone would like to pull? Uh, any public comments on any of the items? Showed in a motion. Please for approval. Roll call?
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. Tiffany?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mike Smith-Buttery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes, under special consent, item number eighteen, request to sell administrative fine lien, one-six-one-five Seabreeze Drive, CEC, zero-nine-dash-eight-zero-zero-zero-zero, uh, seven-three-eight.
Yeah, there are four of these on the agenda, and I think we can, I'll take as much time as you want, but I think we can run through them quickly. They're, they're all situations, uh, where the property got in a, got into a foreclosure situation either before or after, um, the property was cited. In those cases, in some of the cases, there was a notice of lis pendens before we cited the property and the lien started running. Of course, the lis pendens means that our lien doesn't attach. And in the other situation, our lien may have, uh, attached, uh, before the property went into foreclosure, but there's a situation I've explained to you in the past about, uh, whether our lien is superior. And, uh, in fact, the Supreme Court within the last two days ruled on that Palm Bay case and decided that the municipality does not have a right to make its lien superior. So in all these cases, uh, if the bank, uh, or the requesting party wanted to proceed to a court and spend the money, they could wipe out our lien for, for reasons of, you know, it's easier and cheaper for them to offer to pay us something to take care of the lien. Uh, they're offering us money. So in this, this, uh, this particular one, what's a, a little unusual is that, um, the prop, the, there were two properties, three oh four Pineapple and, uh, six fifteen Seabreeze. This is, uh, owned by the Scutellus's. Both of them, uh, had code violations. Um, this is a request by, uh, Fannie Mae to, uh, wipe out, uh, a six-hundred-and-fifty-dollar lien on the three oh four Pineapple Street property, uh, so that, so that Fannie Mae could sell it. Um, under the code enforcement statute, uh, a lien, the code enforcement lien attaches not only to the, the property where the violation occurred, but any other property owned by the violator. So the Pineapple Street lien also attaches to the, uh, Seabreeze property. So by waiving this lien, uh, we, we'd only be waiving the lien, the, the six-hundred-and-fifty-dollar lien as, as, as it attaches to the Pineapple Street property. It would still attach to the Seabreeze property. And that Seabreeze property is still in violation with a lien of ninety-one thousand five-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Um, they have offered two thousand five hundred dollars to settle the lien. Code enforcement, uh, agrees with my recommendation. Uh, the administrative costs are four hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, the, the violation has been corrected on the Pineapple Street property. Uh, my recommendation is to accept the settlement offer of, of two thousand five hundred dollars inclusive of the administrative cost, meaning that the administrative cost would be included in the two thousand five hundred dollars, and issue a partial release of the lien to Fannie Mae for three oh four Pineapple Street. And they'll be given ninety days to pay that amount, you know, which, and if it's not paid, it'll revert to its original amount.
Any questions? Love the attorney.
Move to settle for a mountain offer plus administrative cost.
Inclusive, I'm recommending.
Yeah. Oh, inclusive?
Yeah.
So the twenty-five hundred is it?
Okay, yeah.
Move to settle for a mountain offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. Tiffany?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mike Smith-Buttery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Uh, item number twenty, request to sell administrative, uh, fine lien, thirteen-eleven, Riverside, uh, CEC, one-zero-eight-zero-zero-zero, uh, four-three-nine. Attorney?
All right, uh, this is, uh, the property is one-three-one-one Riverside Drive. The request is by, uh, Remax Real Tech, um, I'm not, I guess they're, I guess they represent the mortgage here. I'm not sure. But, um, in this case, again, the property owner moved away and the property, um, you know, once it became, uh, in violation, including a, a pool violation, green water, which is a pretty serious violation. Um, the code enforcement board found the property in violation in September two thousand ten. September thirteenth, Bank of America filed a foreclosure action and a notice of lis pendens. So this is a situation where the superiority of our lien, well, our lien is not superior. So this is a situation where the superiority of our lien, well, our lien is not superior. Uh, the total amount of the fine lien is seventy-one thousand seven hundred dollars. Um, the violation has been corrected, and they've offered two thousand five hundred and ten dollars, um, to, uh, to settle the fine lien. I, I recommended that the board offer to settle for two thousand five hundred and ten dollars plus our administrative cost of one thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty cents for a total settlement offer of three thousand seven sixty-three and fifty cents, with the usual ninety day stipulation for payment. In this case, code enforcement, uh, Ms. Sanner, uh, recommends that the fine be, uh, five thousand plus the administrative cost, and the administrative costs are one thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty cents.
Any comments, questions?
That's, uh, you know, this is actually a, a closed, uh, session, you know. Uh, I don't know if you guys need any more additional.
I have a question for the, for the, for the attorney.
Yes, sir.
What was, did, did, uh, did, um, Ms. Sanner say why she wanted the five thousand?
Uh, 'cause she thought, uh, her email to me said that's too low.
No, no other reason?
No.
Well, I think it was because of the nature of the nuisance case, but I'm fully in agreement with the city attorney's recommendation, kind of cutting it in the middle, and doing the city attorney's recommendation, that kind of brings it in.
I was just gonna ask this lady who she is, and why she'd like to speak. I'm willing to hear that follow-up.
Just come to the podium now. Well, the, the, no, 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 it won't. I'll help you. Uh, one of the things is, is that Commissioner Tarrpani wanted to know who you are and why you would like to speak to this. That's, that's, that's it for right now.
Okay.
Who you are and why you would like to speak to this.
Okay, I'm Natalie Barone, I'm with Remax. And why I'd like to speak is because I'm representing Fannie Mae, it's another Fannie Mae property. And if that's, and then I'll stop there.
Okay.
My assumption was that was Ms. Barone, so I'd like to hear what she has to say.
Okay, so you, you have, uh, a couple of minutes to, uh, speak, uh, decisively.
Okay, um, I just got this property assigned to me. Um, we took it back from Bank of America. We had to do an addition on the property, so we were at no feasibility of doing anything. Um, as soon as I've gotten this property back, I've gotten everything into compliance and tried to get this done very quickly. We're about ready to put twenty-five thousand dollars into the property to improve it, so that it, we can get it sold and sell nicely, and market nicely, and look nice for the community. So, really, I'd like to, I mean, the twenty-five hundred dollars would be great. I'm just trying to get it down as much as I possibly can, but it is now a Fannie Mae property. It's not a Bank of America property anymore. I don't think my girl made that very clear with Mr. Yakovon whenever she was sending that out, so I'm sorry about that. That's my respect. If you could consider. Thank you.
We'll open now for, um, is a further discussion, motion?
Move to settle for amount offer plus administrative cost.
Yes, sir.
That's for the total of three thousand seven sixty-three fifty, with the ninety days. Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarrpani?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Miss Flattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Uh, next item is item twenty-one, request to sell administrative, uh, fine lien, one-seven-three-nine Meadow Oak Lane, C E C, oh, self, zero-seven-dash-eight-zero-zero-zero-zero-one-six-four-eight-and-one-zero-eight-zero-zero-zero-two-nine-one.
Uh, the property is one-seven-three-nine Meadow Oak Lane. Uh, there were two violations, the first was in November of two thousand seven, that, that was corrected, uh, capping off at thirty-seven thousand seven hundred. Then there was a second, uh, brief violation in two thousand ten that was settled fairly quickly. So that, that fine is capped off at a hundred and seventy-five dollars, and each of those carries a ten dollar clerk satisfaction, uh, clerk satisfaction fee. In this case, uh, the foreclosure was filed in November of two thousand seven, um, which is, uh, and our code enforcement lien did not attach till December of two thousand seven, so theoretically, our lien is capped off at, well, our lien is cut off by the lis pendens. Uh, they have offered to, to settle for, uh, four thousand dollars. Both properties are, uh, the conditions have been corrected, it's in compliance. Uh, the administrative costs, um, are, uh, eight, a hundred and sixty-two dollars. I might add that my city attorney's costs on all these, I do this under the retainer, so it's not like you're paying me a hundred and fifty dollars to do these, uh, if that makes you feel any better. Um, uh, I recommend, uh, four thousand inclusive of the, uh, uh, cost, so that, that we, uh, accept four thousand and, and wipe out the lien.
Questions, comments, motions?
I make a motion to approve, um, the settlement for amount offered, four thousand dollars.
Roll call.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. Tarrpani?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Vice Miss Flattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Item number twenty-two, request to sell administrative fine lien, uh, City, uh, Mortgage Incorporated, uh, the fifth case number one-two-dash-zero-three-five-two-nine, fourteen-sixteen Lonesome Pine Lane.
Yeah, this is a little different. I, I didn't do a, uh, this is a request really forwarded by, uh, Mr. Trask. I didn't do, uh, a city attorney's report and recommendation. There's an actual foreclosure case going, um, and in this case, I think it's the Palm Bay case that's gonna cut us off, so there's, so there's actually a case pending, so it wouldn't, um, wouldn't be that tough for them to proceed to foreclosure to cut off our lien. Uh, so they have offered, uh, there's a, um, the utility lien, uh, which is a little higher now, I think maybe another twenty-two, twenty-three dollars over the one thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents. Um, so, so they, they, so when this letter was, uh, when this offer was made by the, uh, foreclosure attorney, they offered to settle the code enforcement lien, uh, for five thousand dollars, and the garbage lien for one thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents. Uh, um, and we, uh, Tom and I recommend that we accept that offer because all they've got to do is proceed through the end of the foreclosure, and we wouldn't, uh, get any. And the only thing that is interesting about this is that, um, is that the, the violation in this case, this is part of the, uh, Lake Tarpon, um, new sewer project, and, uh, by state statute, once, once a, uh, once a sewer line gets within a certain distance of a property, you have to connect, you have three hundred and sixty-five days to, uh, connect to it. In this case, the property owner, uh, didn't, and then went into foreclosure. Um, and, and so the property is still in violation, uh, in the sense that it's not connected to our, um, sewer line. Uh, so there's nothing to prevent us, uh, once we do this, and there's a new property owner to go and cite that. I talked with, um, uh, the name escapes me. I talked with our Development Services Department and, and what they usually do, and they say in those situations where someone hasn't connected to the sewer line, and, uh, a new owner has come in, they've been, uh, they've simply gone to the person and, uh, and advised them that they need to make, and the situation's been corrected, so. So this is, this is the rare, and the only situation ever where I'm recommending we accept this. Uh, we accept the offer even though the violation has not been corrected because it eventually will be corrected, and we really have no way to force them, so. So they, they could go, they could go to foreclosure, they're, we're getting over six thousand dollars of free money essentially. Does that make sense?
Uh, I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, settlement for code enforcement lien for five thousand and the garbage lien for one thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents, totaling six thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. Tarrpani?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Vice Miss Flattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes, uh, we have an addendum item number one, authorized mayor, city manager execute application for government energy efficiency lighting grants.
Yeah, go, go. Sorry for the short amount of time, but we've been, I mean, emails back and forth of Department of Energy of how they want the signature handled. The simplest and easy way to do it is, the argument was able to be made that we have a commission meeting. So what I'm asking you to do, which will satisfy Department of Energy for this grant, we are trying to get new energy efficient lights at, um, the sports complex. Why the sports complex is eligible and some of our other ones is the lights, these energy efficient lights, we have to be full ready and set to do it in the sports complex. It's the only place you can, that, that we can be ready to go and put those on. So that's the only one eligible. Um, you know, it's, we're competing against a lot of cities for this thing, but, uh, on the chance, it could be up to two hundred thousand dollars worth of lighting for us. So they will be satisfied if you approve tonight the ability of myself and the mayor to sign the grant, and, uh, so we can send it out first thing in the morning and stay within the timeframe, so I'm happy to approve the mayor and myself to sign it. But there is a city match, um, is all money for energy efficient light, so. We need permission for both of us to sign that document.
Any questions?
Uh, any public comments on this item? Show a little bit of motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. Tarrpani?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Vice Miss Flattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes, uh, miscellaneous, uh, item number twenty-three, approve Tarpon Highlands penalty exemption.
As you know, we're not in court on this or going before a judge because we have been making some progress. Um, two gentlemen in the audience from Highlands, one who has helped make this progress on there. We have still got a long way to go, um, but we have been able to get, uh, good chunk of money, over six thousand dollars toward the, what is owed. Also, we're getting full payment from Highlands one and Highlands two of the water bill, along with a little bit, depending what the bill is, a little bit towards the principal while we continue negotiations. We've got several, at least two, maybe more, several banks that we need to get involved in this negotiation. We've still got a long way to go on how we're stepping in the line, how we solve, what, you know, what is owed to us, uh, what is owed to Highlands one, we've got a long way to go, but, um, the thing that dawned on me is the penalties that keep going on. And I think since we're in the spirit of this negotiation, we've got it down. Um, the only authority I could find to have is to ask the commission, um, while, while this is going on, while we're getting full payment, and while we're slowly working down, and to give us time to get these banks in order, and do a lot of complicated things to try to once and for all resolve this, that it just doesn't make sense to, to put penalties on while this process is going on. So, really, the only authority that we have would be for you to, uh, stop that, that, uh, those penalties. I'm asking now, it could be a six month period, again, this is something that's very complicated, involves more entities than the two, with the banks being involved over some of the units or two, so. So I'm asking for at least six months, uh, to stop the penalties, because all this is adding on to what is owed, it's not productive with all sides trying to work very hard together to finally come to the solution of this issue, it's been going on a long time. I, you know, I just think it's fair to stop the penalties, uh, while we're in the state of negotiation. I would like you to approve that tonight.
Any, uh, question, Mr. Tarrpani?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Lacoris is sitting, we'll get to September fifteenth, and we're still not resolved. We could always do another six month extension.
Six, three, or any, if we're, we're close and still working, which could be very well possible with the complexity of this issue, then we can always come back then and ask to continue with everybody working together.
Still have a question, uh, looks good to me.
Any, uh, public comments? Like to have, uh, something to say something to the podium, since your name, address to the record? Give us one minute.
Hi, I'm Jim Grant, uh, ninety-eight South Highland Avenue in Tarpon Highlands one, a member of the Board of Directors there. We are very appreciative of, um, the stance that is being taken here in an effort to help us minimize, uh, the impact on the community as we try to work through this. The thing that's important to us that we wanted to comment on here is that because of the numerous entities involved here, especially the banks that have acquired about five of these units that we are not having any communication with right now, we want to make sure that we all continue to get that information so that we can work with all of the fourteen units down there to bring this to a conclusion. But we're very appreciative, we thank you all for listening to us, meeting with us, and especially Mr. Lacoris for the time he's given us, thank you so much.
Thank you. We appreciate you and your efforts, uh, anyone else? Not, do we have a motion?
No approval.
Roll call.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. Tarrpani?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Vice Miss Flattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Item number twenty-four, approve Craig Park Lighting Plan.
So Fungshin is coming forward to give you that short report.
Good evening, uh, Tom Fungshin, Public Works Director. Uh, back in March, I came before the board with a lighting plan, and during the discussion, uh, you had requiring about the effects of lighting on the wildlife, uh, other issues like temporary workers, operational maintenance costs. Uh, we engaged the service of Cardinal T B, which is the city's, uh, engineer of record, uh, to review the lighting plan. Now, lighting plan was, uh, put together by, uh, myself and my staff, utilizing the, uh, Lemon Street lighting plan. Uh, the light analysis, uh, what they're, uh, what they're looking at, the lighting analysis, increase spacing from seventy-five feet to a hundred, reduce the number of lights from twenty-two to nineteen, and recommend installation of, uh, seventy watt high pressure sodium light fixtures. Uh, they also looked at the voltage drop, uh, made the calculation, determine the best places for the, uh, power supplies, there will be two, which are in your backup on your map, you'll see those, I believe, in the green. Uh, they looked at specifications, which is the same specifications we use for the lighting on Lemon Street. Uh, and we also looked at the environmental impacts, and recommended dark sky reflector kit to minimize the effects of aquatic life in the surrounding neighborhood. And that would make it dark night compliant. Now, we don't have a, uh, ordinance here on dark, on, uh, on dark nights, but, uh, if we did, this would be what the, uh, seemed to be a, a, a big push for dark night compliancy, especially in California. Uh, the operational cost will minim- be fairly minimal. I've looked at the, uh, lighting costs for, uh, Lemon Street, they're about twenty dollars a month. Uh, and of course, the project will be done most part in half, with some temporary in, uh, uh, labor. Uh, funding, we should be able to maintain the original budget of about ninety thousand dollars since we lowered, lowered the amount of lights we needed, uh, so we should be able to keep within that, that cost.
With this, um, when, uh, you're expecting to start, then, you know, estimate the completion date?
Uh, we're looking to hopefully start, we're gonna have to go out and bid on the lights, of course, uh, probably sometimes in the next month or so, uh, there is some seawall work going on down there that may interfere a little bit. Uh, we are working with Park and Sandu, we have to coordinate with them on, on the power drops. Uh, but we believe if we start by, uh, uh, middle of, middle of June, end of June, at the latest over here, I should have this thing lit sometime in the end of August, beginning of September. It won't take- won't take that long to get in. What time will be the delivery of the lights themselves and actually do the labor work.
And again, this was the last thing we told you. We'd come back to you before we began. Um, and we like to get started, especially, I'd like to get those lights in before the time changes, and that's where you have the real issue with so many people. If you go around there walking and stuff, when daylight saving time leaves and it starts getting dark at six o'clock, the amount of people walking between six and nine along that path is tremendous, anybody who goes by there. Um, so we really wanna get on this. Uh, we've answered the lights question with, uh, you know, the safest way for that, which was really the only issue, and we'd really like to get out that, for pedestrian safety, and plus it's gonna look great, um, and, and get that going as fast as we give the lights ordering to go, and so with this, uh, just we'd like to already to proceed with this project.
There are, uh, one other thing I probably should note on here too, is, uh, we're gonna be adding, uh, uh, sensors, of course, uh, solar, uh, sensors and, uh, photo sensors, I should say, and also a timer on there, so if we don't need to turn those lights off at a certain time of night, we'll be able to automatically do that.
Uh, could we start, Danny?
I know it's, it's getting late, Mayor, but I couldn't resist, uh-
Don't worry about it. We, we have all night.
Mr. LaCorus has, uh, a, a young twenty-two-year-old Terrapini called you five years ago and said, "Hey, I've got a great idea. Will you meet me at Craig Park?" And you met me. Did you really anticipate the project taking five years?
No, but good things come for those who wait.
There you go. I appreciate it. Thanks for all your efforts, including staff and, uh, and the commissioner's work.
Uh, thank you, sir. I don't think we need a motion on that, that, you know, so. Any public comments? Let's see. Um, well, it did say approve, but I don't think we need to approve it. Uh, unless you just want to, I mean-
Yeah, if you were just a, pure for approval, yeah, for record, yeah.
Uh, we did have a second, so, uh, roll call?
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. Terrapini?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flattery? Yes, Mayor Archie.
Yes, and, um, we're at, uh, item twenty-five appoint Mr. Budget Advisory Committee. Uh, let's see. Uh, this is to reappoint, uh, regular members, uh, Chris, uh, Angelo, Roger Saloo, and, um, uh, Irvin, uh, Blood, uh, Margon to another three-year term to, uh, to expire March seventeenth, two thousand fifteen, and to appoint someone to fill town commissioner, uh, David Banther's unexpired, uh, term, so, um, the process that we normally use, everybody's gonna chance to suggest someone and then we move from there, so. I don't see anybody jumping south and south with David, uh, Commissioner Banther?
Um, my first choice would be, uh, Mr. Smither, uh, to appoint my, my, uh, my, my vacancy.
Uh, I'd like to appoint the alternate number one, Gerald Goan.
Uh, I'll suggest, uh, Ray, uh, uh, Seber.
Uh, Ray Seber?
Mr. Smither.
Okay. We'll start on your end, since we have, uh, I think it's two, two.
Um, can I, could I offer something, or do we ask to do a tiebreaker, or can I offer a different scenario?
You can offer something, like, you know?
Okay. Um, I would move to reappoint Chris Angelo, Roger Saloo, uh, replace Mr. Margon with Mr. Smither and to appoint Gerald Goan as a regular member, and maybe replace the, as an alternate, Mr. Mr. Margon. Let me clarify.
You don't mind?
Uh, reappoint Mr. Angelo, Mr. Saloo, appoint Mr. Smither, and appoint Mr. Goan as, as a regular member, and Miss Seber as a alternate.
I, I don't hear a second, so what we do is if you would just, uh, nominate somebody to move-
Do you need a second for that? Or we, I thought we were going back down the line.
Oh, that, well, that's, if that's your suggestion.
That would, that would be my suggestion. Just to clarify, is that, is that removing Mr. Margon?
Uh, correct.
Yeah, well, he will be, somebody will be out, but I, what I like to do myself is that, you know, I still wanna select someone for that, uh, appoint that, uh, that unexpired term, so, you know.
Okay.
So, so we're back to square one, understand?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to reappoint Chris Angelo, Roger Saloo, Mr. Margon, um, to another three-year term, and appoint Shannon Rupano to fill the unexpired term of James Banther, and then to place, then we have an alternate position open, Ray Seber as an alternate.
Okay, that, that put another little, uh, wrench in, uh, um, I, I can look at, um, you know, I guess support density. I can make a second, so with this move down, I could say that, I can, I can see that. You, you can go any way you want, we-
Are you looking for me to make a motion?
No, I'm looking for you to say whatever you like to, as far as, but nobody's got anything.
All right, what, what I'm gonna say is that, uh, Gerald Goan, who's listed as alternate number one, has served on that board for some period of time. I believe he's been passed over, uh, once already when we're moving, uh, someone who wasn't on the board at all, uh, into a permanent board position. Uh, so I, I'm in favor of moving alternate number one, Gerald Goan, uh, to fill the unexpired term of Commissioner Banther.
If, i- if, if you are gonna move, move, move up, uh, somebody who is, who is an alternate, I, I would support Mr. Goan for the reasons Mr. Larson, it wasn't me who surpassed him, but first time, but he has done it the longest, so.
I, I would, uh, second, uh, Commissioner Larson, just motion with a caveat, if I may, and that would be to make Mr. Smither the alternate. So move Mr. Goan up as a regular member and put Mr. Smither as the, as the alternate.
I, I would second that if that's what we have to do here. Mayor, if I may, my, I think it'd be more simple to do one at a time.
Well, you have a motion there, you have, so, i- i- his motion is not one, he's just, uh, looking at any type of amendment to it, so I don't know whether I have a second for moving Mr. Goan up, uh-
Yes, that, you know, that's mine.
He second's mine.
Yeah, correct.
But, but I was, but that's not accepted, that's-
Oh, well, I would motion to move Mr. Goan to fill my, uh, unexpired term on the Budget Advisory Committee.
So you have that?
So we're just doing this, just the unexpired term?
Just doing just the unexpired term.
Voting for Mr. Goan to move up?
Correct.
Okay. That, we have a first and who's second? We have a second.
With my motion, I believe.
And, uh, Commissioner Banther.
Okay, go ahead, see you.
Roll call?
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flattery? Yes, Mayor Archie.
Yes. Um, we need, uh, some, uh, uh, directions, I would say, in who that, uh, who would fill that alternate position.
Uh, Banther?
Yeah, I mean, you can. The reason I, I'm asking everybody for who you would select because, you know, I've, I've been at Monis before, because I didn't give everybody a chance to, to say who they would like to put in as the, um, our rules and, 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 uh, artists to say that. Everybody have a chance, so if nobody don't want to actually select somebody and, and the rest wanna have a motion, go ahead, but if you have somebody that you'd like to s- uh, suggest, then I would think that we go ahead and do that, you know?
Well, you're looking at me?
I, I don't know.
I would motion, I mean, they're, they're all three very, very qualified people, but I would motion to move, um, to move Brad Smither up to, uh, the alternate position of, uh, of Mr. Goan.
Second. Well, what, what I like to do is instead of a motion, that's your suggestion?
Okay, that, that's my opinion, just.
Ray Seber.
And I, I say Ray Seber.
Ray Seber, Seber.
Bradley Smith, Seber.
So can we get a motion now? I mean, you know, either one-
I, I move to make Ray Seber the alternate.
Second.
You, you have that, Madam?
I think so.
Roll call?
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flattery? Yes, Mayor Archie.
Yes, and do you still need to deal with the three members being appointed?
We already did that.
No, well, we, I don't, I don't think- We have to reappoint.
The three members we're reappointing or appointing somebody for list is still-
Because they only did the unexpired term of Mr. Goan, and we, then we got the re-
The reappoint.
I made a motion to, to reappoint regular members, Chris Angelo, Roger Saloo, and Mr. Mar- uh, no.
Second.
Just those two, right? Chris Angelo, Roger Saloo to another three-year term to expire March seventeenth, two thousand fifteen, I remember.
And, uh, uh, Mr. Margon.
Oh, and Mr. Margon. Right, okay.
So the motion was all three?
Yes.
I was seconded, yes, I seconded, yes.
Uh, roll call?
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flattery? Yes, Mayor Archie.
Yes. Let's see. Um, addendum item number two is Resolution twenty thirteen dash twenty, approve purchase of property for distant avenue stormwater improvement.
Resolution two thousand thirteen dash twenty, resolution of Board of Commissioners of City of Tarpon Springs, Florida approving the purchase of certain land provided for funding for such purpose, providing for the authorization for certain city officials to execute closing documents, providing effective date hereof, that's a reading of Resolution two thousand thirteen, pass twenty by Saddle Lonely.
Uh, I've got policy to answer the question. Basically, and this has to do with the distant project and, uh, basically to, to long story short, by buying this land, we're gonna be able to save money on the project, because with that land, um, without that land, what we have to do there is gonna be at least equal or more costly than what we have to be done with the project. So while it's looking like we're buying a seventy-five thousand dollar piece of land, it is one that I believe is gonna save us money. It's at least break even and, you know, obviously when negotiations go on and stuff, I don't know how much it could save us, but it'll at least be even, um, for that project to be done, to have that land and, you know, that ton, that's at the bottom of the system, probably the ability to stand that, instead of the other alternative without that land that will have to be done, especially account for the large storms that could happen, um, that's gonna be more costly. Um, so this is the least expensive, um, for the stormwater budget to do it this way and save some money for us, so, um, we're recommending that we get this piece of property, um, immediately if the project starts to save that money in design that we have to do. And Mr. Smith can answer any questions if you have on that.
Do you wanna have any questions, though? I apologize, I don't have the, uh, the gentleman in front of me. How do we achieve the seventy-five thousand dollar number? Was that done by an appraisal, or?
That number was verified by, asked through appraisal. That was the, uh, offer by the seller of the property.
I believe the offer started with them somewhere around a hundred and fifty, a hundred and twenty thousand.
And we had an appraisal conducted?
That's the negotiated price that we did.
So there was an appraisal, then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional question? Uh, any public comments on the title? Showed it in the motion.
No approval?
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. Terrapini?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flattery? Yes, Mayor Archie.
Yes, and that concludes the regular session meeting, and we'll adjourn it at, uh, ten, uh, seventeen, and we'll now go to our C- our A meeting. Uh, a non-call order, the Committee on Redevelopment Agency meeting of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, uh, May twenty-first, two thousand thirteen, at, uh, ten, eighteen. Roll call?
Mayor Archie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Flattery? Here. Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Terrapini?
Yes.
Mr. Banther?
Here.
Uh, item number one is authorize city managers to no- uh, negotiate contracts for the fourth property. Uh, I don't know if there's any additional comments, questions as relates to that. Then none, um, are there any public comments? Showed it in the motion?
No approval. Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. Terrapini?